Zoning and building committee to order, let the minute taker please call the roll.
Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarzki.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Wood.
Here. Next, I'd like to take a moment of silence for Past Alderman Joel Bowles, who passed away recently. Okay, thank you. So next, we have a report and recommendation, authorization to draft an ordinance to amend the text. Wow, I didn't want to approve the minutes. I didn't like those minutes. Can I have a, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion approved, second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
See, nobody cared about the minutes. Next, now we're moving on. Authorizations draft an ordinance to amend the text of the unified development ordinance to allow contractors' offices a special use in the town center business district. Mr. Cage.
Thank you, sir. Yes, item A and B are linked. Clearly, A is the text amendment. Obviously, that would have to go through the process and succeed to allow a vote on B, which are the special use in the major site plan review. And I know the applicant is here and his representative, and I know they have some information that they would like to share with the, some documents they'd like to share with the planning and zoning boards of...
It's okay. Thank you. If you could state your name and... Sure, of course. Good evening, my name is Dan Shapiro. I represent the applicant. First of all, thank you for allowing us to be placed on your agenda. We do appreciate it.
I received a letter after your work actually circulated that I'd like to be able to give a...
Sure, if you've got a handout, just stand over there, they'll pass it down. Thank you. The last time I was in this room was when we were before the CDC, and we were fortunate enough to receive unanimous recommendation. At that time, there was, there were several people who were supportive of our applications. That is a letter which is also in support of the application. The person, the author of that letter happens also to be here tonight in case they have any questions, and there are a couple others in the audience who are supportive. I assume that you received the report and the minutes. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm also happy to summarize the nature of the applications at 361 Wooddale Road, just down the street. We're here really, two things. We're seeking the use of a contractor's office in this particular zoning district because it's not provided for. So we're asking for a text amendment to allow for that as an additional use, in this case, as a allowable special use for, for this particular zoning district, and we're here for the special use itself, assuming that the text amendment were to be voted, voted upon. So again, I'm happy to summarize, but I don't want to belabor something. If you've already seen it, there's nothing worse than people listening to an attorney who talks too much. So... I'm not looking at you. I just don't want to be guilty of that. So whatever, whatever this committee's preference is, I'm happy to do it. Mr. Cage, well, go ahead. Do you guys want to do a presentation? They can comment, they...
However you want to do it. I have a presentation that I can go through briefly.
Yeah, why don't you run us through it, and then we can get the specifics on it, and then they can address what they need, and we can ask questions then.
Thank you. Okay, absolutely. So, let's look at this thing. There we go. So, as stated before, contractor's office at 361 North Wooddale Road, so it would need a text amendment, special use permit, and a major site plan review. So the proposed text amendment, which is the first portion, which is item 4A, which would allow contractor's office in the town center business district, that is the zoning district that the property is, it would allow it as a special use. Just so everyone's familiar with the property, a little bit south of City Hall, on the east side of Wooddale Road, just across from the former SBT Bank. Obviously, this is the zoning map. The red is TCB Town Center Business. And this was, as you will remember, a portion of the vision plan. Obviously, the building is just outside the area, but I think, you know, certainly from, from a planning standpoint, the vision plan and the TCB zoning district was something that predated me, but there was a lot of discussion of it. Obviously, we have quite an extensive plan on the west side of Wooddale Road, and clearly, this is just kind of outside that district on the east side. Right there, highlighted. Moving right along, this is the site plan, existing conditions. Obviously, it shows a one-story building at 361, associated parking, et cetera. I know the applicant has already worked on a few items here, and I'd be happy when we conclude this, if they would like to update it. I know the, one of the items that we had was the sign in front, which has been removed. Obviously, that's the, that's the one-story building, the impervious area, the parking lot and parking spaces, and the sign, as I just mentioned just a, just a minute ago. Obviously, this is what the building looks like, right next to Kleptron, across, across the street from us, the front facade along Wooddale Road, and the north facade of the building, right next to the parking lot, existing conditions. Hold on a second, we have a... Oh, there we go. So, that was the sign I just mentioned a minute ago. Obviously, we have a number of items in the presentation. If anyone would like to stop or have questions, yes.
If you could back up a slide, Alderman Messina had a question.
Can you go back one more slide, please?
Absolutely.
One more.
One more.
Couple more. I, just a quick question, I just wanted to confirm. Setback, is that 25 feet?
That is...
That I thought I read?
Yes, it's just, it's 25 and change, it's almost 26.
That, that was my only question. Go ahead.
Okay. So, where was I? Sign, yeah. If anyone has any questions, just jump in, site plan.
That was my only question.
Do you have another?
Yeah, I do.
Alderman Messina?
Okay, so when I looked at this, 94 feet was the length of the building, so more than half of the building is going to be dedicated, if I did the math correctly, to storage and warehouse. Is that correct?
That is. I had a 50%, and you might have a little bit more, but I think we're both speaking about the same thing, and I'm glad you brought that up, Alderman. The original staff report expressed some concern about that space, storage space, and we made it very clear when we were here on the 17th, there will be no manufacturing, there will be no warehousing. The storage space is there to put some extra storage or boxes, but it's not intended to have loads of materials or, or, or equipment, and it will not be such. Alderman Messina?
So it's your lucky day, because I, out of college, used to work for a big distributor that sold to HVAC contractors. So, questions begin. I, I've read different conflicting things about delivery, FedEx trucks only. My question to you, and I think I read, nothing more than 100 pounds would be delivered there, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, in this business, rooftop ventilators are a big thing, condenser units, refrigeration, that's way more than 100 pounds.
They will not be stored there.
Okay, so when they have a, so when they have a project that they have to install a rooftop ventilator, where is that, where is that going?
Sure. Yes, I'm going to have Chris speak directly to that.
We're in a... Alderman, I'm Chris Butts.
Just give us your name first.
Yeah, Christopher Butts.
Okay, thanks.
Just so you guys understand the nature of my business, it's a commercial refrigeration company. We work for a lot of food service companies like Tramark, Marlin, La Sorto, and Great Lakes West. They provide the equipment to the site. All we have to provide is the manpower and labor and piping materials. So a lot of that stuff gets brought out to the job site. It's purchased before we put it on, because obviously, copper is a commodity, and people like to take it. So we don't really have the need to store it, because as we install it, we're buying it.
Okay.
Alderman Messina?
I'm just going to list my questions. So you mentioned the piping storage, right? Well, I guess, we'll start with that. Heavy-duty racking, will that be in the storage area?
No.
You will have, so how are you going to store all the pipe?
Again, we're buying it directly from our suppliers, and it's going right out to the job site. We're not going to store anything. So like Porter Pipe Supply is one of our suppliers. We'll literally place an order, they deliver it, we install it.
So you talked about safety, so you're saying you're going to, you'd rather it's safer to deliver it to your job site than it is to keep it in your warehouse in Wooddale?
Correct, because we're putting it in as, as it's delivered, we order what we need and we install it.
Okay, so there's going to be no roof, there's going to be no heavy-duty racking like the big ones you'd see in a Costco?
No.
Am I understanding correctly?
No, no. We're, we're not a HVAC contractor. We're, we're big exhaust fans and sheet metal and ductwork and all that stuff, that's not what we do.
What about a, I'm sorry, follow...
Go ahead, you're on a roll.
What about a forklift?
A forklift, we, we don't have necessary for it, because again, the FedEx deliveries we're going to get are small parts and stuff that, that are going to be delivered to us from a manufacturer. Like if, once we've installed something, they have a bad contact or something, they'll send it to us FedEx.
I noticed when I drove by the property, there was screening done, and then the lot was repaved and striped, is that right?
Correct.
Did you get a permit when you did that?
We applied for the permit. Kelly has not gotten back to us on it. I did not know when I restripped it because of what she'd recommended. I did not know I needed a permit, and she said, hey, you need a permit. So immediately, the next day, I went and applied for it. So it's applied for, it's sitting with the, the city, I'm just not sure if it's...
So the work's done, but you applied for the permit after the fact?
Correct.
Okay.
And that was my fault.
Just one more question, just to confirm, as far as vehicles stored on-site, that's kind of my big thing, right, my hesitation. Am I confirming three of the actual service vehicles will be stored on-site overnight, over the weekends as well?
No. So we have three employees, myself and two others, that will be at the place usually from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM every day, Monday through Friday, I should say.
So your application had, your application said three service vehicles, is that not right?
No, because I have 10 guys working in the field. We'll have one truck that'll probably be there most of the time, and that's a backup truck in case one fails. So on it, right now, it's a pickup truck, so it, there's nothing going to be sitting there. So like if a truck breaks down, it goes to the auto repair, and then they're going to take that pickup truck.
Okay.
And then they're going to use that pickup truck, and then when their truck is fixed, then they return the pickup truck. So we're really not going to have anything stored, and then there's enough parking spots, and then we also have two spots behind the building that we can actually hide the truck back there, if you guys suggest that too. So I don't have any problem with that, and even if we have to, if it's an issue, I can park the truck elsewhere.
Thanks, Chris.
Alderman, if I can just refer you to our letter, just want to make it clear. So in our letter of August 10th, we said that the business employs three full-time employees, accountant, secretary, and owner, who also perform sales and utilize three vehicles at the, who use three vehicles at the current location. Likewise, there'd be three full-time employees and three personal vehicles at the proposed location. No vehicles would be stored. So I just want to make sure that that was said in our application, we clarified that.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yeah, I guess my, just a follow-up to Alderman Messina, asking a question about your striping and coming into compliance with the handicap spot. You did do this prior to getting a permit, I understand that, but it has been done to the city's liking, correct?
Correct. Alderman, that, that was our error, and we apologize for that. There were, there were some other...
Not to interject, I just want to make sure it was done within the bounds of what the city had asked for.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Sorrentino?
If at all possible, is there anybody here from the CDC that voted all in favor of this amendment? I'd like to hear their side of the story. I mean, there was five yeses and two abstentions, which actually turned to yeses, and their reasoning, if it's at all. Is there anybody here from the CDC?
Alderman, I can, I can offer some explanation on the two people who did not vote. They recused themselves because of a personal conflict. I believe they're friends with the applicant or have some relationship. So of those that did attend, they all voted in favor of this, or all recommended in favor of this.
Thank you.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
So my question here, did we not sit up here maybe last year, maybe this year, about rezoning that whole entire area for, for something different than what's proposing tonight? My question... Huh?
2:13, 9:07.
So we went ahead and did that. So now we are asking us to go ahead and rezone this or special use. Well, special use. Special use. So my question is, how many more special use are we going to grant here? I mean, that whole area, that's our downtown area. We have spent a lot of time, a lot of work on redesigning the downtown area the way we want it. So, I mean, if we're going to go this way, what's going to happen if a laundromat wants to come across the street too, and they're going to do a special use? What I see here is we've been set a precedent of, of what goes in the special use. So, I mean, unless someone's going to change that whole area again, I mean, I, I just don't know why we waste our time and attorney time and drew it up that way.
Alderman Peter Jacob?
Couple questions. Number one, this is for Mr. Cage. So, you know, I know they're saying they're not going to park trucks there, but I've been told that by businesses before that have turned into disasters. What, I mean, what if they do park 12 vans there, or what, what can we do about it? There's really nothing we could do if we give them a special use, correct?
Well, just, I'll answer your question and Alderman Wesley's at the same time. The first part is the text amendment, so this would allow the, the use as a special use. So we, if it were to be considered, we'd have to modify the UDO to allow a contractor's office as a special use. The purpose of the special use is any more intensive use that would go in a district requires a special use. Clearly, that would be reviewed by the CDC and by the committee and city council. So it's not uncommon. It gives an, an extra set of eyes rather than just, you know, staff. It gets reviewed by the CDC and then by the city council. And then, to answer Alderman Jacob's question, yes, we've, we've had issues with other businesses not following our rules, and I would, would want to put it on the record. Obviously, the applicant, the petitioner, did testify that they wouldn't do that. Obviously, we would, if it gets to the point where a text amendment is approved and a special use is approved, you know, we could work with attorney Bond to put some language in the ordinance, so there's more teeth rather than just our normal code, which doesn't allow the parking of certain vehicles in certain districts. So I echo your point. We don't want a lot of vehicles parked in areas that they shouldn't be and stored overnight, because that has led to some issues. So if we were, you know, if we got to that point, I think we would probably put some language in the ordinance to reflect that.
Alderman Jacob?
And, and I guess my other thing is, we, we just approved a $30 million project across the street from it. To be very honest with you, I'm kind of on the fence with this, because, you know, I mean, you guys have been in business for a long time, you guys have been in the community, but we just approved a $30 million project going in directly across the street from you, which, you know, we, we want, I mean, the whole thing with the whole city council here has been pushing for is more businesses, restaurants, with this new complex going in across the street. I could see a dry cleaners coming, putting something on Wooddale Road or Irving. So I'm just having a little bit of a difficult time with this, so.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes, was there any public or residential objection to this?
If I may, Alderman, and perhaps you were calling for those in the room, but it reminded me to remind this committee that Mr. Butts personally went out to at least eight or 10 of the neighbors shortly after the application was filed. He reached many of them, but not all of them, and none of those who he reached and knocked on the door objected, and to this day, we're unaware of any objections from anyone. Alderman Messina?
Yeah, I, if you, I know you guys made an attempt, seems like there's people in the audience. Are there any residents that are in attendance that can, can speak, that actually can list or address that are actual neighbors and not just friends from the area?
Yeah, I don't know where they're from, but I know they're supporters.
Okay, are there, okay. So are there, can we, can we ask mayor? Can the chairman? Could we ask if there's anybody, any neighbors in the area?
I don't think that there's really any neighbors to them.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes, can Mr. Jacob show the $30 million project we have going on, that you say that's going to happen? I don't know of anything we have in stone that's happening. We haven't agreed to anything on this council yet that you just stated.
Apparently, I must have been sleeping while we all agreed to have, have a apartment complex that was actually, we saw drawings and everything. I must have been asleep for that one.
We did have council, but do we have drawings? Do we have concepts? Do we have any shovel dates? Do we have anything that you were anticipating? I'm just asking a question. I, you stating that, do we have a shovel date?
We don't have a shovel date, but we also...
Do we have drawings? Do we have designs?
All right, we're not going to debate.
I'm just asking a question, do we have designs?
He answered the question. We're not going to debate the start of the project.
Well, it's a debate because of the fact that he brought it up. We don't have a shovel date. We don't have designs.
We said there's no shovel date. Are there any other questions? Alderman Sonny Sorrentino?
It's a very perplexing situation my, I find myself in personally. Yes, there has been a mention on the east side, I'll concur with Alderman Jacob, that there's going to be a wow effect built on the east side of Wooddale Road. But with that in mind, what Judge Kavanaugh, who's going through this craziness today, his building isn't a ghetto building. It's a very attractive building. There's no curtains hanging out of the windows, there's no window air conditioners. He's already, from the photos I've seen, he's removed the sign, as was mentioned earlier. Those bushes in front of the building are those freshly planted by you, and the handicap spot, as well as the paving and restriping, you've done everything in your power to bring that property to what the city would consider up to speed. So it's really a, a text amendment scenario here that I understand Alderman Wesley, if a laundromat wants to come in or anything like that, you know, but if we're going to be business-friendly, you know, we need to perhaps adopt a, an attitude of addressing each business that wants to come into Wooddale, maybe one at a time, see what they're all about. But this is what's perplexing to me as a sitting alderman here, and I would ask Elena, don't call on me first when it comes to a vote. Please, I'll check, I'll check to the razor on that one. And it's just, it's a, it's a tough spot, Mr. Butts, but I commend you for what you've done, even taking it out to the residents. I wish you luck.
Alderman Jacob?
Again, I'm not against this. I'm on the fence about this, but the other thing is, if we allow this once, I can just see people coming onto Irving Park Road, we're trying to clean up the community, city is being proactive, we're trying to bring businesses into the community, restaurants, things of that nature, and, you know, I can just see us going back to the old Wooddale, which, you know, is the way it is right now. I mean, we're trying to make this a more business-friendly for the residents, walkable, ice cream shops, and if we allow for one, it's not really fair for us to give this to you, and then someone comes in two weeks later on Irving Park Road, Irving Park and Wooddale Road, where we just spent, put a clock tower, and they go down the street and put something else in there, we give them a, you know, then you're kind of in a tough situation. So that's why it's like Alderman... Sorrentino said this is a little bit, a little more complicated than Mita here.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, and I, I, I'm in the same boat as everybody, I think, up here, right? So probably on your little section alone, I spent three hours on a plane reading, and I thought about, it comes down to interpretation. I think that staff is interpreting it one way. I think clearly your attorney's interpreting it another way. It is absolutely our, our city center. It's not commercial, so I disagree with his interpretation there. It comes down to small service, business services and small office, essentially, I think, was that interpretation. We need to figure out if that meets the criteria. I would say that our whole goal of that area is to draw visitors. High visibility, walkability is our whole intention there. This does not do that. However, at the same time, as I tried to figure out, one, did research on you guys, but also figure out where has this been done before, I went, found myself in Schaumburg on Roselle Road, just north of El Juaher, and there's a place called Ridgewood Mechanical. That is probably this little strip of, of, of land, or a little, it's a strip of businesses that are pretty rundown, and then you have Ridgewood Mechanical, it's probably the nicest thing there. I see optimism. I believe that if this is, we're going to move forward with this, or at least for myself, there needs to be some type of parking agreement, Director Cage, kind of like we have with some of the other businesses, because you are going to be high visibility, very high visibility. I agree that it is an office space, and a lot of that will be in back, but it is, it is a major gamble for us, because we have to monitor, and we don't want to babysit. There's enough buildings, like Alderman Jacob said, on Irving Park, that we already have to babysit. That's my concern. However, I do feel, based on what I saw on Roselle Road in Schaumburg, that you could easily blend in and have no problems, as long as the building's maintained, and you get permits when you're doing stuff ahead, ahead of time.
Yeah, well, kidding aside, the building looks 100 times better than it has. It's been vacant for six years. We want to move on it, I get that. There is high risk for you, high risk for us, but high, high rewards for both of us. We know that. We know, we know what's coming. We know what you're willing to do to the property. To me, weighing the benefits, the pros and the cons, I don't know, I'm leaning towards allowing this special use. Alderman, if I can just jump in there, if it's this committee's desire to put an additional condition with, with respect to, you know, big trucks or whatever, as a, as an additional condition in the special use, we would have no objection to having that in, in language, and I'm sure Mr. Bond and Mr. Cage could, could work on that. Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yeah, we have, just so you know, three dry cleaners along Irving Park Road, just so you know, if you need your jackets brought there. I'm not pointing at anybody. We have one ice cream parlor called... No, your jacket's mine. Peter's repels wine. We have an ice cream parlor. We also have a buyback issue. You would sell to the city, you already claimed that. Do we sell back to the city and not impede on city progress? He already wrote that in his claim. Not only that, it is special use. This does not go to anybody else other than the person coming to us tonight. This will not be carried on if you want to buy that building tomorrow. You buy that building from Mr. Butts tomorrow, you will not be able to do what he is asking you to do tonight. That means, that being said, I don't understand, we don't have shovels in the dirt. We don't have any kind of plans going on right now. For me to sit there and say that I won't accept property taxes or sales taxes or any kind of monies that Mr. Butts would give to the city, I find that completely, completely crazy. When he's been nothing but compliant to the city's demands, and given the city has come out and said, do this, do this, do this, and he's paid that money forward and done it, I say, give him a chance. Give him a chance, and in two years, we want to buy the building. He said he would sell the building. He specifically said that, and so did the, so did the lawyer here and the CDC. I watched the whole CDC. I was not present, no, I wasn't, but I watched it on cable. So I, I, I don't know. I have a, unless you can show me otherwise, I, I don't have a reason to that vote yes.
Mr. Bond, if you want to address the, the statement, so if we, on the text amendment, so if we adopt the text amendment, we amend it. Whoever comes in can avail themselves to that amendment.
If it's a text amendment, if you're giving us, what it'll do is it'll allow for a special use.
Right.
The special use still has to be individually brought before the, there's a process in, in the statute, and you can impose conditions... the statute, and you can impose conditions on those special uses. But if you have a text amendment, that would be an allowable use in that zoning district.
For anybody.
Correct. Now, the special use, it just allows it to be, somebody to apply for a special use.
So to get the ball rolling, I'll make a motion to approve. We're gonna have more questions. Take it easy. We'll get the motion on the floor. You can put it on at any time. I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Wow. Didn't think it was gonna be that hard. Okay. Any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Well, Mr. Cage, how, how long do we spend to meet the UDO?
Mr. Cage, you wanna?
We, this predates me, so I know the UDO was drafted in 2010, I believe, or around that time. I know some considerable time was spent on it, going from the old zoning ordinance to the new UDO. So I believe, from what I've heard and just seen, from what I've heard and seen, considerable amount of time.
Do you have a follow-up, Alderman? Alderman Jacob?
Just for the record, staff's recommendation was to...
So, there are, I'll answer the question, but I'd like to explain, you know, give an explanation with it. So, some of the issues that the council is struggling with, or has raised today, staff had the same concerns. Obviously, we had the vision plan. We have the comprehensive plan. The crux of the issue from our standpoint is that the property is owned TCB, Town Center Business. That connotates a walkable district, obviously, along with the newly created TIF district. That was the intent when the TCB district was created back in around 2010. So, from that standpoint, staff did not recommend approval, because it did not meet the criteria. However, what that means is that, you know, this is a departure from the plan. And just, just bear with me a second. We've talked about TCB, Town Center Business, and other districts. And my opinion is that there does need to be some changes to TCB, because it hasn't worked well in some of the areas along Irving Park Road. Is this the correct area for it? I'm not sure. Staff did not recommend approval, because it did not fit with our long-term plans.
Alderman Jacob, follow-up?
This is regarding, Alderman Sizmarzki made the comment about sales tax. They've been, you've been in business in town for a while. This is to our finance director back there. Do we get sales tax from them currently?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's some AV equipment in the chair, so I came over here. You know, to be honest, be perfectly honest with you, at this exact moment, I do not know. However, based upon my understanding, that it's somewhat of a service business, is that correct? So if it would be a service business, then we would not, because there's really no taxes on service businesses or offices, per se, unless there was suddenly some sort of commodity, aside from a professional service. But I would have to verify that, but just knowing what I know about sales tax, that's my best guesstimate at this point.
Alderman Messina?
Since we're already at a second with this, I guess what I would ask you guys that are on the fence, like I asked myself, was, yeah, this goes against what, hypothetically goes against what we talked about, right? That idea of transformation. We let these, we let them move in, we approve this, we're slowing down transformation, we think, right? But as I dug deeper into the plans, and I dug into more about what they're looking to do, they essentially are no different to me, based on the fact that there's no heavy deliveries, there's parking that's allotted, there is a front entryway. To me, they're like a dentist's office. And so when I looked at the definition of what they fall in, yes, it's services, yes, it's small office. I don't see them as commercial. So I feel like they fit that definition better. And this is why I think that definition needs to be looked at, that, that part of the ordinance needs to be amended. Because based on what he's describing, and if we can figure out this parking situation, I think they'd be no different than allowing a dentist's office, or a small storefront bakery in that spot, in my opinion. Something to consider, though, because, yes, it does stall transformation, but based on the rendering we're seeing, I think they'd fit in just equally as good as a bakery. Go ahead.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Mr. Wilson, will you take a, please, have a question? My question to you and the council is, do Simba Kids have any taxing money come back to the city?
Mr. Wilson?
Again, I would have to look. I could probably look here in a moment, but again, my understanding of their business model would lead me to believe no.
Did they take money from the Streetscape project?
Mr. Sizmarzki?
I'm sorry, sir.
That's okay.
Do they receive money from the Streetscape venue?
Mr. Wilson, or Mr. Cage, either one.
One of the other, doesn't matter.
Mr. Cage?
I can take that. Yes, a facade grant was approved for that location.
Mr. Alderman Sizmarzki, follow-up?
I guess, it's not a fight between who's bringing in sales tax. One's complying, one's taking money from the city, but one's offering money to the city, one is not. It's temporary basis. It's not in the next 10, 12 years. The gentleman is offering to sell the building back to the city, if the city can show that they have something to build there. So I don't, I just have to use this as a comparison. They're also in the TCB, correct? I know they are.
I believe they are, yes.
And they take money from the city, which is never gonna be returned, because there's no sales tax return.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Murmice?
Yeah, a lot of interesting points raised tonight. I just wanted to just state a, kind of off a comment off of Alderman Messina. I had an opinion. I was part of a lot of those conversations about the TCB and whatnot, and the UDO, you know, around 2010. And while Alderman Messina is correct, it probably wouldn't look any different, and it probably would fit in. The one thing that was discussed heavily at the time is the walkability and services to draw the people in. So it's gonna look good, but it's not, people from the area aren't gonna walk necessarily to go and do whatever this business does. So that's the one difference at the time that was discussed. So it'll fit in, and it may look like a dentist's office, but people from the area are gonna go and patron the dentist's office, when people from Elmhurst, or Elgin, or wherever are gonna patron this business. That was a lot of the discussion at the time.
Mr. Shapiro, you wanted to?
Thank you.
Speak?
I think it goes without saying that this is a success story. Chris's business has now outgrown its current location. He wants to continue to stay in the community, invest in the community, and have the ability to take over a vacant space that's been dark for six years. Previously, it was an auto parts store. Now, I understand your planning, and we've addressed that in our comments and our application. But, but right now, there is nothing. There has been nothing. It's been dark. So one of the, one of the things I'd like to stress to this committee is that there will be an occupant. There will be some additional movement, energy there. And when the time comes, if the downtown center plan matures, and there's a forward momentum with that, if and when that time comes, and I think we all hope that happens, as the alderman has indicated, we will entertain any reasonable offer to sell the building to further that plan. But right now, for 10 years, it hasn't unfortunately moved forward. And I would just hate for this spot to stay vacant for another 10 years, in the hopes that maybe one day, the town center plan would move forward. So we're hoping that his business can continue to grow, stay here. He's been a good neighbor. He's shown you his good faith efforts of trying to improve the property at this time, and be compliant. And we would really, really urge for your approval and recommendation.
Okay. I call on myself. I've been quiet. So again, I mean, we covered a lot of ground. We've argued back and forth, tax, all that. But the, the big thing is, is the town center and the planning, the master planning, the future planning. And the biggest shortage in the city of Wooddale is land, or dirt, or locations, or pieces of property. So within that segment, or the town center, which is improving, things are happening. And no, there aren't any dates, but they're certainly on the horizon, and right around the corner. That's, that's my issue with it. I have no problem that, or concern that Mr. Butts would make the building look good. It's just, the people that we bring to downtown want to walk to Harry's Ice Cream Shop, or, you know, Joni's Waffle House, or something else. No offense to the refrigeration company, you know. So that's, that's my opinion. That's, that's where we're at. That's really the, the argument. I, you know, it doesn't matter to me whether they bring sales tax or they don't, compared to another company. You know, we just need that's kind of hallowed ground, and that's what it was reserved for. Thank you. Are there, okay, one more question, and then we'll move forward. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So you said you outgrown the building you're at. Now, where was that building at?
I'm right, I'm right by Giles Funeral Home.
Chris, yeah, if you could go up to, I'm sorry.
You're at TCJ?
Yeah, TCJ Mechanical. We're right next to Giles Funeral Home. It's 800 square feet. And just to add to what you guys were all saying, being naive, and we're growing, we saw the building that was vacant for a long time. My wife was really pushing for us to be in the area. I saw the building, and we went and saw it. The building, if you guys look at it, it doesn't look like a dentist's office. You know, it's, it's designed for auto parts, and kind of what we're using it for, because we're gonna build it. So I was naive. I didn't even look to see if it was in the TCB. So I want you guys to know that. So when I found out it was in the TCB, we just want to be able to use the building as long as we can, until Wooddale comes up with another plan with that area. Because I know that you guys want to do that. I don't want to impede it. And I'm being serious and honest, that I'm not looking to wreck anything. I was trying to promote Wooddale and buy into it. Okay? And seriously, so if I get bought out down the road, we'll buy back into Wooddale. We want to stay in the community. We want to build a community. I've been here, this community, Benserville, Wooddale, for 47 years. So I don't plan on leaving.
Okay. Let's, let's call the vote. Roll call? Oh, Sonny?
Sonny, I never-
Do you have a, do you have a question?
Yeah.
I thought you retracted the antenna.
Funny statement. I just wanted to get a statement out, because, again, being perplexed over this. I asked myself, self, if you were gonna open a business on Wooddale Road, being a walkable, sociable, eatery, service business, would I object to this business being my neighbor? And knowing that, number one, they're not there on the weekends, and they're, when they are there, they're there from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and there's the owner and two employees. I, if I was gonna open anything from a restaurant to, I believe it at that, I would have no objection as this particular business being my neighbor. Because I think, if anything, they would complement my business, because they wouldn't be there. And it could allow me some additional parking. If I work a deal with them, that's a little statement, that's all.
Okay. Roll call.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Alderman Messina?
You gotta ask me second? That's not fair.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Make some of the people happy some of the time, and not all the people all the time.
What the job calls for.
I am all in favor of Judge Kavanaugh going into the Supreme Court.
Wait, wait, that's the wrong motive, that's the wrong-
I'm at the wrong hearing?
You're at the wrong hearing.
Oh, my God.
Sorry about that, Mr. Sorrentino.
Okay, 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 okay. Enough. Yes, okay. All right. That passes.
Congratulations.
So, right, no, I'm going next. So next, authorization, authorization to draft an ordinance to approve a special use, a major site plan review to operate a contractor's office at 361 North Wooddale Road. Mr. Cage, do you wanna, or Alderman Messina, you want to say?
Nothing to say. I'll make a motion.
A motion if you want to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve a special use and major site plan review.
Okay. Do we have a second? Mike, do you want to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, we have, we have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Cage, is there anything you want to say, or any input?
No, I think we've, we've covered everything.
We've covered all the ground. Mr. Shapiro, you wanna, you're an attorney. I thought maybe you had a few extra words left in you.
Words aren't money.
Mr. Butts, do you wanna, anything? All right. Mr. Butts, oh, Mayor, Mayor, please.
Okay. So I've been listening. So this is now the next phase where stipulations would be added. So when we say no large trucks, we're talking just, he said he's got vans and pickups, right? So this is, correct me if I'm wrong. So no large, I mean, that would be a stipulation. I heard, doesn't have a problem with that, because he doesn't have large trucks, correct?
Delivery trucks.
Well, the delivery trucks, that's gonna be a big truck.
Mr. Cage?
Delivery's gotta be a delivery. What are you gonna, you can't stop a delivery.
Yeah. Mayor, you're exactly right. This is, this is the time to discuss that. I think, you know, from a staff standpoint, we'd be happy to draft something with the applicant. We've all heard the comments, the concerns. I think, you know, that's something that we can work on, and draft something up, and have Tony Bond review it, and have it ready for when this would go forward at City Council.
Mayor, please.
So I also heard, you know, some developer wants to come in. So once that project across the street starts digging and whatever, and there's another developer in a couple years, or three years, whatever it may be, he'd be willing to sell. Is that an actual allowable stipulation?
Can we get a, write a first refusal or something? Mr. Shapiro?
Sure. I mean, we stand by all of our statements. So the first one was large trucks. Large trucks, we can put that in as the condition, and Pat and I can work on the language, what that means. And we also stand by the position that, I thought it was like if the city wanted to buy it, but someone else wants to buy the property, it's certainly something we would consider, and we would take all offers. Of course, you know, you have to come to an agreement. But, but the answer to your question is, would be, would we be willing to consider an offer, either by the city or private developer? Yes.
Mayor, please, you have a follow-up?
No, Mr. Bond is telling me, of course, you can't, cannot put that into the agreement. That's what I thought.
Is there any language?
Not without compromising the property owner's rights to the property. You can certainly make note that it was, it was proved with that understanding and the representation from the property owner, that we couldn't compel, because-
And the strongest language possible.
Absolutely. But, but, you know, but, I mean, if the city were interested into it, we could do, we could put some language in there.
Well, that's what I'm saying, from the city's perspective, because we would probably-
But to put it with a private property owner, still, we require the parties to reach an agreement as to the fair market value of the property. As you know, the city can only pay fair market value for property under the Illinois Constitution, United States Constitution. So we could put some language in there, to the extent that the city-
We're certainly comfortable with something like, we would consider offers, private offers, or offers from private developers, or the city. And I think that perhaps the-
Yeah, I think that, as I understand, as I understand, it's the desire of the council, if the city were to acquire that for purposes of future development, or some type of development consistent with the T C B district. Is that...
Correct. So as the issue's always been, not only just Mr. Butts' building, but the building next, so it's not, what else could I put in that? It's knock that one down on the next one next door, and put something bigger in, a much grander plan, right? So you get that. I'm not here to pick on you.
Right.
I'm here to forward the plan that we all voted on, which is sometimes hard to do, but since we've already turned down other people in the past, I myself find it hard to then switch gears and go, because I might like you a little better, I'm going to let it go. But, so, I just stayed aligned. So, I mean, that's where we're going, that's what we want to do, and I think that future is closer than anybody really thinks, and so in a year or two, we might be knocking on your door that soon to say, hey, it's been nice, but, you know, maybe we could move you a couple blocks the other way, and we'd work with you to find something, correct, Mr. Cage?
Absolutely.
When that time comes. Thank you. Alderman Messina, you want to say something?
Well, yeah, so it's clear then, I guess, you're giving the city, the city would have the first right to the property, with the understanding, Mr. Butts, that we pay fair market value, because reality is, that property will probably be worth a lot more, right? So just understanding that if that's built in the agreement, that, to me, is a big thing. But then, secondly, I really, really need to understand the parking. Ed, Director Cage, overnight parking is a big thing, and even if there's one truck that you have as a floater for the repair, it needs to be in back or out of sight. That's a big thing for me, because when I looked at that Rozelle Road property, that Bridgewood Mechanical, yeah, there was nothing up front, and there was a diner next door, Bill's Diner, pretty awesome food. But that is the big thing, is just the consistency of blending in, to your point. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jacob, you have a question?
Just, maybe I misunderstood with the city being able to buy it. Could we have some language in there that the city would have the first opportunity? Did you say yes to that? Okay, just want to make sure I understood that correctly.
All right, so we're good. Are there any other questions? Mr. Sizmarsky, or... I don't know. Mike, are you coming? One question. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So, right now, we're voting on a tax amendment, right?
No, the tax amendment's passed.
Special use.
Special use.
So, will this be ready to, if we give the special use tonight?
Next week, if it comes to council.
Will all the language, will the two attorneys work it out by next week?
Mr. Murmurs, you wanted to interject?
Yeah, sure, sure, sure. I know we're all excited, but as I always say, with some of these CDC issues that come to P Z B, sometimes they don't advance to the very next council meeting. So there's a chance that it may not come until the second council meeting in October. It happens. Everybody always looks perplexed when I say that, and I give the same answer. It's... Sometimes it doesn't advance to the very next meeting. It would maybe go to the following council meeting. We have a very short turnaround time, remember. Committee is Thursday evening, and we have agenda packets, and attorneys having to go back and forth, literally in two hours on Friday. So I know it looks perplexing, but it's my same answer every time. It might not be ready the following week.
I'm not perplexed. So if it's the following meeting, it's the following meeting. All right, so there's no further questions. We have a motion, we have a second.
Am I supposed to...
Roll. Mr. Alderman Messina?
My motion for those conditions?
Mr. Bond, what's your recommendation there?
Yeah, if it's the second or agrees, I think we've heard what those are, so we'll put together, including the conditions. Conditions I have is that no overnight parking of vehicles is going to be visible from the street, that no large trucks will define what large trucks can constitute, and that the city retains a right of first refusal, and the property owner grants the city a right of first refusal, all as conditions of the special use.
Okay. And you accept that? That's your motion?
Petitioner nodding ahead, yeah, I agree. As the motioner, I agree to that.
And the second or concurs? Okay. Motion second, everybody's happy, smiling up there. Roll call.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
That passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next items to be considered at future meetings, there are none unless somebody has something they'd like to put on the meeting. Seeing none, I make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Okay, but not here.
I'm 100% positive.
I'm going to take a resemblance. Who just stepped out? Eugene Wesley has left for a second. Everyone else is still here, so I need approval of minutes of Public Works regular meeting, August 9th, 2018, at 7:30 p.m.
Still moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, I have a report. Actually, before I do that, I've got an order which I need to do. I don't know if it's legal. I need to ask council, or legal, is it... Go out of order, is okay?
You can just ask if there's any objection to you going out of order as chair.
I'd like to do A, B, D, and G first, then C, E, and F. That's not a problem.
No, we want to do everything except for that.
I want to go over A, B, D, and G first, and then, yeah, everything was, yeah, pretty much everything was stormer, so.
So just move C again.
We're moving C to E and F, correct. Thank you, Mr. Woods.
You're welcome.
First, I have approval of contract between the City of Wooddale and Kim Construction Company for the sanitary manhole rehabilitation, and they're not to exceed an amount of $275,200. That is my motion. Any questions? No. Roll call. See, it says $275,000. Roll call.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Motion carries. Second, I have selection of pollard colors. All the aldermen should have received the swatch that was handed down to the end. Please pick a color for the pollards, as it receives all the way to you, Mr. Sorrentino.
We saw it all the way down.
I said Mr. Sorrentino correctly tonight.
You did a good job.
I'm sorry for... Where's the swatches?
Alderman Wesley.
Would they be handed out? Have you seen them?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Love that gray.
Mr. York?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to know the outcome of the color selection?
I would love to know the outcome. I mean, this is the only, the fifth time that we've talked about...
How about we just go down to council and roll call color, instead of yes or no, color. Mr. Sorrentino, oh, I'm sorry. This is Eileen's job, I'm sorry. You call the name, and they'll give you a color instead of yes or no.
Okay, Alderman Sorrentino?
Gray.
Alderman Jacob?
Gray.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Don't care.
No, that's not an answer.
Abstain?
Gray or black?
Gray.
Alderman Catalano?
Gray.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Hmm. Yeah, that's my turn. Uh, I don't know, gray.
Alderman Messina?
Black.
Alderman Woods?
I have a question.
Black.
Can we mention... So just before we jumped into choices, I mean, Alderman Woods made a great point. The black, both are going to fade. The black is going to fade to probably that gray in front of you, and that gray is just going to get lighter and lighter over the years. So that's essentially why I chose the black. But...
Mr. York, do we have a guarantee on any of this, as far as fading colors? I mean, Sherwin-Williams does this all the time with fading, and do we have any kind of warranty on the fade, or contour the paint, or whatever it is?
I believe it's five years. It's no more than 10 years on these. And with this type of material, and the cost of it, you know, if we get 10 years out of them, and they're starting to look faded...
They'll look great.
They probably, they probably could be replaced. They're not going to be here forever.
Right.
And in 10 years, we may want to do something different. We may have a different model of how we want things to look, so...
Alderman Woods?
What color the bench is going to be? What's the standard, city standard color for the bench? Mr. York, under garbage can.
The colors will be based upon this decision tonight.
What's the color we've talked about for the last two years? That was a hint.
Black.
Mayor?
I said my piece.
I'm a black, by the way.
You what?
I would pick black, because I had that dark gray in front of my house. Constantly having to touch it up. Black. It matches our street polls, and it just...
That being said, I want to re-roll call for the color, not to say yes or no, color only. It's a motion. Color only, not a, I don't know, I don't know, I care. It's a motion to be black or gray, please. I made the motion.
I'll make a motion to change it to black.
I just made the motion.
Roll call, please.
Your second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
No, wait.
Are we doing it?
Pollard color, black or...
There's a motion for black.
Black or gray only. That's the only question I want to hear. That's the only answer I want to hear.
Yes.
There's a motion on the floor for black.
I re-admit that motion. I said I want a black or gray answer only. Black or gray.
This is for black, blue is black.
Right. So I made the motion at the beginning to do a second. I didn't hear a second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for black.
No, I was just rescinding my motion. But I was rescinding my motion to go to black. All right, go ahead. Just go, please. Let's carry on.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Don't answer for me. Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
I thought you were going to say no. Motion carries. Is it black pollards? Are you happy?
Thank you. They will be ordered.
All right, next, I got, skipping this one, I'm going to the approval of contract between the City of Wooddale and McDonough Demolition, for the demolition of the city-owned building, not to, in the not to exceed amount of $55,900. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Mr. Wesley?
Is it all those buildings?
Mr. York.
The whole strip mall, or does Ready Electric?
Mr. York.
It's the Ready Electric building, and the four small buildings that are next up. It's all one building.
The whole compound is one building.
It's one building. It has five addresses.
Mr. Messina?
What?
Mr. Messina.
Oh, okay, sorry. Didn't know you were calling. I heard Messina.
No, no, Messina.
The building that we're demoing is 11,000 square feet, right? So to answer your question, it's 11,000 square feet. That's the property. There is one property adjacent to it that will still be, will still be there, but I think it's Ready Electric and three other tenants. It's a total of four, right?
Four.
Yeah. The bid, which I know we didn't really flash anything off, but it's just over 55K, right, and we were...
Yes, it's $55,900.
Yeah. Okay. And just so I'm clear, I had asked Attorney Bond prior, this is, once we execute the contract, they, according to their contract, they will demo within 30 days. Can you reaffirm what...
Mr. York?
The contract states that they will be, work must be completed within 30 days of notice to proceed.
Notice to proceed, okay.
So we will give them notice to proceed once all the tenants have been removed from the building.
Wait.
And all of the city-owned utilities have been disconnected, and the other electric and...
Gas.
Gas has been disconnected. Then they will have notice to proceed.
So, Mr. York, the city is helping those buildings, residents that are tenants right now, to find a new home in Wooddale, correct? As far as the city manager Murmurs would know, and Mr. Cage? We're not just kicking them out to the curb, we're helping them find a new home, correct?
Correct.
I don't want to see this 30-day, we own it. I don't want to see a 30-day, you're out, get out. That's not how we're supposed to be conducting ourselves as a city councilman. I understand we want this building down, but I don't want to kick people to the curb that have been doing business in this town for quite a long time. Mr. York?
Cage.
I mean, Mr. Cage. I've been Mr. York the whole time.
Just wanted to clarify on that point. I've been working with Attorney Bond, have reached out to all the business owners, and have offered, you know, we, obviously, we have a program, and we can put in certain parameters, size of building, type of use, et cetera. We get a number of listings, and we can send it over to the, to the business owners. So I have heard from one of them back that they did request some information, had a couple of different locations, obviously, in Wooddale. Hopefully, that's something that they're going to be looking into. Thank you.
Mr. Murmurs, I have one question for you. This price of $55,000...
Nine hundred.
$900. Does the building contain asbestos at all? Does this price include demolition and asbestos removal, if it is so known? Mr. York?
The price of $55,900 includes the survey work. Until the survey has been completed, and will not be able to be completed until they have access to the building, then we will know if there is asbestos in it, and if asbestos remediation will need to take place. That'll be in addition to the contract. There's no way for a demolition company to give a number for that prior to their quoting. So I did make contact with Mr. Backsa from McDonough Demolition, and once he does get notice proceed, and does his asbestos survey, then we will get a new asbestos remediation number, which will be above the $55,900.
So that's what my question to you would have been, is this price going to go above 55,900?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Just a couple of points. Yes, it's going to go higher than 55. It was the lowest bid. The highest bid was double that price, if I recall, or pretty darn close.
68,000 was the second.
I'm sorry?
68,000 was the next quote.
No, I meant the highest bid. Highest bid was 100 and something, wasn't it?
114.
114. So more than double. We know that that will go. I remember my question now. Couple of questions, actually. Director Cage, the contract was executed, what would, end of July, right? Maybe that's a question for Attorney Bond. Sorry.
Mr. Bond?
The contract was ended, was executed, I believe, in the first meeting in August, and then we closed on it in mid-August.
Okay, so essentially, we know the situation, right? They, some of those folks know, some did not know, but if... But essentially, by the time we bring this to demo, which we've told them October 31st, we've essentially given them, call it 70 days almost, 70 to 90 days of advanced notice with year help, with community development's help to relocate them. Attorney Bond's office has been very good with communication in not only seeking to, to offer them help, but saying, hey, here's the deadline. And this is what's, you're down to 30 days. I think he said, he told me, he sent them a notice. He's gonna send another one when there's 15 days left. To me, the only way, if I knew I was moving and I had 70 days to move, if I'm not out in 70 days, then I'm really not making an effort, especially with all the help that we're offering. I'm treating this essentially like, hey, I'll keep that coming to myself. But essentially, they've had advanced notice. I'm hoping for a seamless transition and a demo well before the holidays kick in. And I think a lot of our residents will be thrilled when they have their family coming into town, having to drive past that now demoed building.
Mr. York.
Just, just.
Mr. Cage, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Just to clarify, actually, I'm due to go and pay all three businesses a visit tomorrow at the end of the week. I have some, some information from Attorney Bond to deliver to them. But I also wanted to take the opportunity to talk to them and then obviously reach out again. Obviously, I've heard back from one of the businesses, haven't heard from the other two, and just say, look, here's my card, here's my information. If you need listings, if you need some assistance, we'll help you. So knowing that it's a sensitive issue, knowing that the city has big plans, we wanna do the right thing, we wanna reach out to people, make sure they have the opportunity to avail themselves to some of our services. And if we can help them, we certainly will.
Thank you.
Mr. Wesley.
So besides the asbestos that they have to look in, they also have to look at the contaminated soil that might be out there from that mechanic place? So is that part of contract too for them to look at that? I didn't see it in there.
Yeah, there was nothing in there regarding the contaminated soils. But I mean, if there's contaminated soils, we're gonna have to pay for it. So, I mean, it's not gonna be, I'm not gonna hold them accountable for.
Oh, I understand, but I don't want them to seed and blanket it if we got contaminated soil out there. So that's gotta be tested too.
Mr. Jacob, you don't have anything, you're not reiterating what Mr. Messina said, are you?
I do have a question on it, yes.
Well, I have a question, as long as you're not reiterating what he said.
No, it's not reiterating, but I have a question for Attorney Bond. They, when we gave them their notice, they were given notice and they've had, how, what date do we close again? Exact date? October 31st.
Still businesses.
Okay. So they've been given the time and I've been working with them. So, and I know we said, Mr. Murmurs, what was the deadline we originally told them?
October 31st.
Mr. Murmurs.
Yeah, it was October 31st. I wanted to jump back to the previous question about the site remediation. I don't believe that to be correct. We do not have to remediate the site. We could seed and blanket that. The remediation of the site could be a separate deal worked out with a private entity down the road when it's redeveloped. It does not have to be remediated right now.
Thank you.
And again, this is not a resident, this is a business. So it's not as, if there's tons of thousands of apartments available, this is businesses in town looking for a spot. Mr. York. Mr. Jacob.
I guess my final question would be to Mr. Bond. I mean, I know you've been in contact with them. When's the last time you've actually physically had contact with them? I've met with the tenants, all three of them personally. I've communicated, I've had several phone conversations with them and have had two and perhaps three correspondences.
Just a final question. I know you guys know how near and dear this is to my heart. I just wanna make sure that we're clear that you guys already have the wheels and motions to turn off all the utilities and all that stuff so that there's no other issues once the tenants are gone to demo the building.
I cannot give Nycor or ComEd access to remove utilities until those people are no longer there. So once November 1st comes around, I will make contact to both of those companies as soon as, since those people are no longer gonna be out there. They will then have 14 days to remove services. After those 14 days, then we will do notice to proceed for demolition. So that'll put us right around the 15th of December for completion date. And during the 14 days, there's, there's, I can't tell Nycor to come out and turn them off or ComEd to come and turn them off. It could, it could be sooner, but I can't have them come out and turn them off if they are not, if people are still there. Because once I tell them, they have, they can do it anywhere between day one and day 15.
First of all, it's not a Christmas gift. It's coming down, we own the building. It's coming down before the end of the year, correct?
That is the plan.
If everything goes the way it's planned, it would be down before the end of the year.
That is the plan.
Mr. Messina.
I just have just one more question. Are we, are you able to make a request prior to the November 1st date?
No.
No. Not to Nycor.
Yeah.
Yes, Nycor and ComEd, they will definitely not give you a request.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I guess we need a vote. Roll call, please.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley. Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, they approve of the sidewalk replacement contract for the 2018 sidewalk replacement program with Triggy Construction, Inc. And the amount not to exceed $40,000. That is my motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Questions? Do I have a question also? There's a, how many sidewalks are there in this whole replacement program? Mr. York, do you know, do you have that number? I'd have to throw you under the bus or anything. If you don't have it, you don't have it.
It's 4,750 square feet. So if you divide that by five, you're around 900 and some odd squares.
Okay. Mr.
Yeah, Mayor, we have, we have issues with sinking sidewalks. I mean, I've seen them over the city, I see a bunch of them in my ward. That causes water ponding. So when the weather changes, is, you know, there's a good chance that it's gonna ice up and it's gonna be very treacherous to pedestrians. Does this company have any kind of a program to handle, like to lift up the sidewalks?
Mr. York.
Yes. This company, no. I think what you're talking about is mudjacking. There are other companies out there that do mudjacking. The one that I am aware of is Razorite and I believe there's another couple more in the area as well. Currently, we are not doing any mudjacking in town. The, we're doing more remove and replace. So every four years, each ward gets done once. So this year is Ward Three. So a lot of the, all the, all the work that's being done is in Ward Three for a sidewalk this year. So we don't do mudjacking. I know I talked to Alderman Jacob before the meeting about grinding. We don't do any grinding either. There are other alternatives to sidewalk remove and replace, but what we find is that mudjacking is a temporary solution. Grinding is a temporary solution because if it's offset, why is it offset? Let's fix the problem instead of grinding it. So right now, we aren't, we aren't using those alternatives.
Okay. Yeah, are we going around the city and marking those sidewalks that are pretty much sinking?
Mr. York.
So every year, we do a sidewalk survey of the whole entire ward, one ward each year. Like I said, this year we did Ward Three. That's why these are coming forward. These sidewalk squares will be marked in the upcoming couple of weeks. Prior to a ward on the fourth and then contract start after that.
Before I get to Mr. Messina, we, we do take care of sidewalk issues ASAP as they come up, correct, Mr. York?
Yes, if there's a sidewalk that's an issue outside of the ward in question, just contact the Public Works Department and we'll go out and investigate it and see if we need to replace it.
Thank you. Mr. Messina.
So, so I'm clear. Alderman Catalano's and Alderman Sorrentino's ward, if I remember, this is the ward that we're tackling this year. This is what, this res, or this is what this is for. So ultimately, is there a way that as we're doing this, if they identify something that's beyond a square that needs to be repaired or replaced, that they could come back and issue a change order and say, we got bigger issues? To Alderman Catalano's point?
Mr. York.
We did. If you look at the bid results, we did add in a little bit of extra money to a couple hundred dollars, which is a couple ex, you know, probably another 10 or 15 squares, because that's always happens.
I was meaning some of the bigger issues you said, like the, you called it the mudjacking? Like some of the bigger issues, if we say this is beyond.
But, but that's different, but.
Right, right.
Some of the things that he's, some of the things that he has seen.
Okay.
Some of the things that he has seen is gonna be the stuff that we have denoted already on this plan. So if there's something that is, comes out after the fact or something that someone sees that's not marked, they can contact Public Works and we can come back out and take another look at it. A lot of times, people don't like the way that it looks, but it's still structurally sound and it's, if it's just spalled, that's not an automatic replacement. We're looking for one-inch deviations, which are trip hazards. That's where we're starting.
I've had that issue before where they said the color doesn't match. Well, the colors are never gonna match. Because one concrete company uses a different mixture of stuff, so I've had to deal with it myself. Mr. Catalano.
I'm not too concerned about the cut, I'm concerned about safety. Some of those sidewalks are perfectly fine, but they're sinking, so we don't wanna replace them, we wanna jack them up, so. That's, thanks.
Any other questions? Roll call?
Yes.
There's a motion, a second.
Okay, Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Motion carries. Alright, well, we'll go back to item C on the agenda. Ward Two and Three, stormwater plan. Mr. York.
Yes, okay, so back in July, when I was gallivanting around the East Coast, you guys had a large meeting about the Ward Two and Ward Three Stormwater Project. Some other information was given to Aaron and our, the fine folks at Robinson Engineering. And we are back here today to talk about some of the things that are going on with this stormwater plan and where, where we're currently at now.
Alright. With that, we'll begin. As we recall from July, a big focus was that big rain that we had on May 30th. And just as a reminder, we, the city did receive a little over three inches of rain in about 90 minutes that day. Categorized somewhere between a 25 and a 50-year storm. And the reason I bring that up, we, we actually have got this video. This was taken along Prospect Street, or Prospect Avenue that very day. You'd be able to see as this car tries to drive through it, how at the deepest point, which is relatively early in the video, you'll see that left headlight is completely submerged. It confirms the water depth in this area being at least two feet. And it might be a little blurry up there, but it's still raining. So it may have gotten deeper after this, this particular video was shot. But, and you can also see how at Georgetown, the parking lot across the street is completely inundated. The reason I'm bringing this to your attention is a little bit later in the presentation, you're gonna see some of the results of the computerized modeling. And it's going to confirm exactly what our eyes see right here. So just wanted to show this for the moment and obviously, this is no stranger, you guys are no strangers to what happens in the heavy rains. But I, again, wanna make sure that everyone understands the exhibits that'll be shown in a bit. So the main things that we're gonna focus on this evening, we're gonna have a real quick update on the Squaw Creek project, the computer modeling results, like I mentioned. Per the council's direction at the, at the July meeting, that you wanted to have a closer look taken at the detention alternatives that exist for the south area, basically south of Sarah Drive. We also wanna take a look at the cost versus the flood reduction levels, potential project schedule and phasing, as well as financing plan. Squaw Creek, the council did award a nearly $800,000 project to A-Lamp Construction on August 7th. This project, while it's relatively small in the grand scheme of the overall improvement, on its own should lower ponding depth on Miller by three to five inches. So it is the far downstream end of where we are beginning this endeavor. Ultimately, much of the other water flows to this point. So we wanted to start with the downstream end. Contractor is anticipating a construction start date of November 5th. And we anticipate that this work will be, some of it will be done over the winter months with, with completion by the end of March. One thing that has changed since July, the council was, was pretty adamant and we concur that we are not gonna wanna work in the ComEd right of way to the fullest extent possible. You can see on the, at the very upper end where the yellow line is, that's from the old ComEd storage facility that was planned. And it was going to discharge, there's gonna be a lift station right there that you can see at the top. Those things are now not going to happen. We're going to instead look to reroute down Dalewood Avenue. As a result, there's a little over 100 feet of storm sewer. Little over 100 feet of storm sewer and a couple of other appurtenances that are now no longer necessary during this project, so we're gonna delete them from the work. It should result in the cost savings around $20,000 on, on this first project. You guys, I believe everyone saw this exhibit the last time. Just to remind everyone, the, the areas in blue up on top. Yes.
What are we deleting? The lift station only, or?
The, the lift station doesn't exist. That was a proposed future lift station that will now not be in that location.
But the water's still going through Squaw Creek?
Yes, it is.
Okay, 'cause it kinda threw me. It was, the pipe was gonna run, now it's gonna go through Dalewood and I'm like, wait a minute, we're doing Squaw Creek and then we're not attaching?
No, there's still a lot of overland flow that is gonna come the same way that it always has from George Street. But, you know, basically, the, the division of these three, the, the ones in blue were the, are the ones, the, the key project areas that we're always focused on getting into that ComEd storage facility. The ones in red are the ones that we focused a bit on in our presentation back in July as we defined the problem area. They're a little bit, in a little bit more detail. There's a couple of spots here in orange, and we're gonna come back to that in a little bit later, but really what those are, are independent from a hydraulic standpoint of the proposed underground storage. These are the drainage areas that we, I just wanna make sure everyone has the framework again of where, where we are. Should we, should we wait? Okay. And just to refresh everyone's memory, basically, everything from this area ultimately goes to that area towards Squaw Creek during large events. Everything from the southern region basically comes ultimately this way and discharges into Salt Creek here on the other side of Addison Road. The concept was to have a northern underground storage facility on, near Potter and Prospect, and a southern one. Exact location still to be determined. We did discuss the concept of potentially using a couple of vacant lots that exist on Forest Preserve Drive and also potential for Park District site, but it could be other, other locations. Go ahead, Mayor.
Those potential sites in the south, I mean, right now, it's empty land, but when you first came back, you were talking about putting underground storage underneath Prospect.
That is also a possibility.
Okay, because then if we have enough storage there, then those other lots remain buildable at some point.
That would be correct. The trade-off would be, it's gonna be more expensive in all likelihood to build it under the pavement, because you need to replace the road as opposed to in the grass. So if there was a grass site.
Right, of course.
We would at least examine it, but we're not, at this stage, we're still very early. we would at least examine it, but we're not, at this stage, we're still very early in determining exactly where the southern site would be. That would be the, one of the next steps. As just a quick little reminder, this, this one little independent spot up here on Park Lane, that is a project that was completed by the city back in 2016. It provides a level of relief in that area for the, for much more frequent storms. Two-year storm, five-year storm, ten-year storm, probably doesn't have a gigantic impact when we get, when we get the really large ones at this point. The next thing we looked at, and what we did since, since July, is we updated the computerized, the computer modeling. All of the efforts previously were really focused on that Phase One area to the north where the blue ponding areas are. We expanded the detail of the hydraulic model to look into many more of these areas, and we identified ten key spots overall that we needed to monitor as we modeled various improvements to verify the ponding depths. That might be a little bit small to see, but these are the ten locations that are shown on the map. And you'll see that in the existing conditions, this is with no improvements done yet, ponding for just the twenty-five-year storm in many locations exceeds a foot. It's over two feet on Prospect. This, you know, the twenty-five years, it's a little over two, two feet. The fifty years, about 2.7 feet. That's about what we saw in the video. You know, so the computer model has spit these numbers out. We believe it's calibrated fairly well based on our observations here on, on May 30th for that type of a storm. In that hundred-year event, you see numerous locations that are well over two feet, even, even over three feet for that, that type of a storm. So, that's what we're starting, that's our starting point right now. And as we look at the various options for both the northern and the southern underground storage, we have to remember that it's not just building the underground detention. We need conveyance sewers that are going to transport the water from the problem areas to the storage, and then we need a discharge, which at each of these facilities would be a lift station, and that would then be pumped to where it would ultimately discharge. So there's really three components to each project, or each area, as we go forward. So, in general, that's, that's what these, these really look like.
Aaron, what? We've, we've talked about this, we went over this, we came down to this. What is the end-all-be-all? What is the percentage? If you were to give a percentage of, this is going to be the end-all-be-all answer to this area? If you were to throw a number out there?
In terms of a cost number or a flooding level?
Sunny constituents, they want to know, is this going to be the magic bullet? I know you don't have that answer, but to a percentage, what do you think this is going to be?
We believe that the recommendation that you're going to see this evening is going to solve the problem.
Okay.
It is.
Just because some people might sit there and they say, "Well, I'm out of here. I don't believe this." Stay tuned, listen to the end.
And, and you're going to see a few charts like this, and this is, this is what's going to demonstrate exactly what you mean. Thank you.
All right. Well, I have to Mr. Messina real quick, and I'll be.
Would you mind going to slide back?
Sure.
When you mentioned lift stations, are you talking about three lift stations or ten lift stations, one at each of those sites?
Two lift stations. One, one for each storage facility.
Sorry, missed that.
All right, thank you.
So, again, this is an existing conditions chart for all ten of those key locations, and you can see Prospect, Potter, Miller, Lincoln, Erman on Prospect Intersection, the Sarah and Prospect Intersection, the low point on Gilbert Lane, Victoria, Arlene, and Mary Jane Lane. Not to say that there isn't other hotspots in other blocks, but these are the ten most critical from a hydraulic standpoint, according to the model, okay? So what we're looking to do is identify for each storm, these are the existing conditions. I've got these highlighted in yellow. You will see a little bit later that elevations here are actually higher than the lowest foundation that is on that block. So this is, these are very critical elevations in terms of trying to protect homes from damage with any ultimate solution. So that high water level of that 690.96, yes, Mr. Chairman?
Do you have one question?
So, sorry to go back a slide.
Sure.
Were those, when you stack rate them, were those grouped at all by location? As I know that might affect cost as well, or just what's most?
This right here is the existing conditions. So we've got a computer model of the entire area.
Right, right. Oh, I didn't know, I didn't know if you'd grouped them by severity.
No, the severity varies in terms of, you can see on the, on these, in these last columns here.
Right.
For a twenty-five-year storm here on Prospect, it gets to over two feet. Right at the intersection, not quite as high, but if we go to a fifty-year storm, you see it 2.7 and 1.4 feet. All of these have different corresponding values based on, on what happens out, out there today, okay? Visually, this, when that hundred-year event happens, and when that water level gets to about 691 from an elevation standpoint, you can see the area of inundation that would occur. This is Prospect, excuse me, Prospect is right down here. This is Potter. Here's Erman. Here's Sarah. Here's Georgetown. George Street is a little bit off this map, just barely. Now, what I'm going to do is I'm going to zoom in real quick. Oh, excuse me, I'm going to bring this back a little bit later. Sorry about that. So what we did, you just saw where the existing conditions stand for that hundred-year storm. What we did is we looked at various solutions. We're trying to optimize the best solution for all of those troubled areas that would solve the problem. And we've talked in the past, do we want, you know, do we want it to be a solution for the twenty-five-year event and live with a little lower flooding for the fifty and the hundred-year event? Do we want to solve it for the fifty? Do we want to solve it for the hundred? We looked at all these options, and if we wanted to absolutely, you know, build the best Cadillac solution, which would be to have zero ponding whatsoever during a hundred-year storm, okay? Not even an inch in the street. What that would take, and I'm not advocating it, I'm just suggesting what it would take, you would need sixteen acre, for the twenty-five year, it'd be sixteen acre feet. For the fifty-year, it would be twenty-six acre feet. And for the hundred-year, you'd need a total of thirty-six acre feet. Now, for comparison, when we looked at the prior Phase One project in the ComEd right-of-way, we were proposing nine acre feet. So, that's the order of magnitude that we're talking to have an absolutely, you know, perfect solution, so to speak. Not advocating it, because it's very costly, but that's what it would take. I believe there's a question, Mr. Chairman?
Mayor. Aaron, one of the first slides you showed us, the video was about three inches in ninety minutes. And you said that was twenty-five to fifty?
Somewhere between twenty, twenty-five and fifty-year storm, yes.
So, just so people understand, I mean, an acre foot, for people who don't know, is three-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand gallons. So, that was twenty-five to fifty, three inches in an hour and a half. What constitutes a hundred-year storm? Six inches, seven inches of rain? What is?
There's a whole curve that defines what a hundred-year storm would be, so for an hour and a half storm, it may vary, will be closer to five inches or thereabouts. For a twenty-four-hour storm, it might be eight and a half, about eight-point-nine inches, I think, is the number. So it, it really varies by the length.
You're throwing a lot of numbers out there, and anybody who's watching, if they don't know what, what you're talking about, it's going to confuse them.
Sure.
I think, not to interrupt, but I know, we talked about the May storm, did you not bring a schematic with you that said it would have been nineteen water towers of water?
From the last presentation, yes.
That's a lot of water.
It was actually a hundred-and-sixty-two water towers.
I'm sorry, yeah. I remember the water tower thing, and you said it would have been a hundred-and-sixty-two water towers full of water coming down at once.
So for context, the mayor, you said it, right, the May 30th storm that you had the video, that was considered a twenty-five-year?
A little bigger than a twenty-five, maybe not quite a fifty.
Okay, so the idea of a hundred-year storm is pretty, pretty rare, very rare.
Yeah, the definition, the definition of a hundred-year storm is a one percent chance in any given year of occurring.
Okay, okay. What's that?
None today's standards. I mean, climate change, I don't know, you know.
We're not scientists, so we don't know.
So, based on council input from, not just in July, but in prior presentations, there was a, a goal of trying to make sure that we maintain street flooding under twelve inches of depth for the worst-case scenario. So, we initially went into this exercise trying to determine what improvements are going to be necessary to achieve that goal at all ten locations of not having more than twelve inches of water anywhere on the pavement, okay? So that was the baseline, and the memo that was in your packets from last week was based primarily on that baseline case, okay?
No, we're talking, we're talking about Ward three. What about Ward two? I mean, is there, is work into each other?
Ward two is on the downstream end of this, near Squaw Creek, obviously?
I just want to let everybody know that either this is working in or with cahoots, or not with Ward two.
You may have heard this before, stormwater really doesn't respect municipal boundaries or ward boundaries or things like that. Ward three flows to Ward two for sure, in this case. So, as we go forward, again, there's a lot of numbers here, but the recommended scenario, if the standard that we want to meet is to have less than twelve inches of ponding in the worst-case hundred-year storm, it would take a fifty-year storage, a fifty-year design storage on the northern portion, and a twenty-five-year storage level on the southern portion. What that would do is, you can see, all those numbers that were between one feet and three feet on the prior slides of today, look at all the zeros that you see up there. You would have zeros in a lot of these locations. In those worst-case scenarios on Miller Lane, we'd still get, you know, a tenth of a foot for a twenty-five-year storm. That's, that's a little more than an inch. Half a foot for a fifty-year storm, almost a foot for the hundred-year storm. You'd still get about nine inches on Prospect for the hundred-year storm as opposed to three and a half feet. So it'd be a humongous improvement if you, if you decided to go to that level of service. You see on the chart that Gilbert Lane, I mentioned earlier, that Gilbert is somewhat independent of the storage efforts that we would make. Part of this is because it's so close to Salt Creek. The tail water from Salt Creek plays a big role there, as well as the sewer that Gilbert discharges to on Addison. There's a sixty-inch storm sewer that ultimately goes into Salt Creek, and its capacity is limited, so to solve or to lower the flooding on Gilbert would require a separate improvement that I'm going to, I'm going to demonstrate right now. So that, those are the elevations that we're talking about in the red box. So, in this original chart, we mentioned, you know, the ones that are connected to the northern underground storage, the southern, and the ones that are independent. You see Gilbert Drive right here, and what the yellow arrow is signifying is a separate storm sewer that would provide additional capacity in that area. The same problem exists here on the ComEd right-of-way. A lot of this ComEd discharges into the rear yards of some homes on Gilbert. That would be a separate storm sewer in addition to the other things.
Mr. Catalano?
Now, that ComEd, I mean, they have issues in flooding on their right-of-way. So how come they're not putting skin in the game? Why do we have to?
Well, we, we did have discussions along those lines with ComEd, you know, it's probably eighteen months ago now, and they were at least open to acknowledging that they may be able to participate in it. I don't know, you know, since we're not doing the remainder of the project, we really haven't any, had any conversations specifically about that lately, but we would certainly reopen that to try to get ComEd to participate in that.
I would definitely like to see us look out toward, to ComEd or send ourselves to ComEd to see if what they have out there is actually playing havoc on our, our end of the field.
Yes, that, the whole right-of-way is essentially sloped toward, toward the south.
Their flooding is, their plane is actually implicating all those residents back there.
That's in this area over here.
Yes, that's correct. That's pretty good. We've got Christmas colors going there.
Putting my eyes.
So, by, by adding the storm sewer along Gilbert, you see that these are those three numbers that you saw before. By, by making the improvement that we would recommend there, we won't solve it completely, but you'd see those flood elevations go down considerably, be it zero for the twenty-five-year, about nine inches for the fifty-year. It's still close to two feet at the hundred-year, that one percent chance every year. But hydraulically, unless there's something regionally that helps the Salt Creek levels, it's going to be really hard to do better than that at this point.
Mayor?
Aaron, so on Gilbert, you're talking about the storm sewer over there. But if the creek is over the top, that water's not moving, correct?
It's moving, but it's moving under, under a hydraulic head as opposed to, but, but it moves a lot slower.
But if the creek is over the top, right, of the inlets that are, that we're shooting the water towards, right? So it's inlets, if the inlets are underwater by two feet, that water's not going.
It's moving slowly, but, and that's, that's part of the reason why, even with the extra capacity, we would still have a certain amount of flooding on Gilbert. It's going to be really hard to avoid. But a certain part of it can be improved with additional hydraulic capacity there.
At the same token, we need to talk to the Army Corps of Engineers about dredging.
You had mentioned that previously, yes.
I would definitely go with that, Mr. Catalano.
Could you go back a slide where the, the mapping is? Now, around Gilbert, oh, Forest Preserve, I believe, there's some vacant land. Have we looked into that as far as for, you know, detention?
The, the two lots that are on Forest Preserve, yeah, that, right where that yellow explosion is, where it says Southern UDS, that's, they're pretty much right behind there.
Would that take care of the problem with?
It would take care of a lot of the, the areas that you see in red, but the Gilbert's situation would not be solved by that. We would need the additional capacity.
Okay.
And, and going back to the city's master stormwater plan that was prepared back in, I think, 2011 or thereabouts by Baxter and Woodman, that Gilbert's project was recommended as part of their original master plan as well. Our, our recommendation is consistent with that. So, from an overall project concept, and again, this is to achieve less than twelve inches in all these locations except for Gilbert's, okay? You're looking at a northern storage amount of sixteen acre feet. You would have everything from Sarah, Erman, and, you know, all these areas are connected, would end up here. There would be a lift station that would be constructed.
Mayor?
Wait a minute, you said Sarah going to the north. If I remember right, in that May event, that Sarah's where we had the little volcano coming onto the ground.
That's correct.
That, that stuff was going to the south, but because it was, it was backed up, that's where it exploded, right there in the corner, and then it went north. I thought we were going to try and separate these two systems.
And we are.
It does, it's.
No, no, he just said it's going to the north.
One of them.
What, what, what exists today is a series of undersized storm sewers. They're, they're, they're undersized for even the ten-year storm. And so, today, Sarah does connect to the store, the same storm sewer as all of these do, and it comes through here and ultimately? To the south, correct. What, and, and maybe I should take one step back.
Yeah, you're not showing the seven acre foot south, that they're all not seeing where it's going to go.
Yeah, the, the, the south storage would be down here, somewhere along Prospect. Whether it ends up on the vacant lots, whether it ends up in the park, whether it ends up under Prospect, it's, it's conceptual at this point. But, all of these sewers, you know, each of these areas that have this, you know, a foot, two feet, three feet of flooding, they're all in a bowl, okay? The overall hydraulics of the system does not allow that water to get out during these large storms. So what each of these conveyance sewers would be able to do would be to convey the hundred-year storm, okay? That way, the bowl effect is eliminated. When we bring these to, you know, a main interceptor like this forty-eight that would be proposed here, it bypasses what used to, you know, it bypasses that. So the, the plan would be, because the overland of this area already comes this way, we would bring these to the northern storage. The hundred-year storm sewers along these blocks would come south into the new storage facility here, be pumped by lift station, and then at a controlled release rate, go the way that it currently does with the thirty-inch that goes through the apartments down here, crosses ComEd, and ends up over here. So, hydraulically, this is the, the plan that would, again, keep all of those areas below the twelve inches.
And I understand, I understand that, because if you stand on Sarah and Prospect and you're looking south, it's an uphill. So I don't understand how the water can go uphill. That's why we're having these issues over there. So, it was bad engineering in the past, so. Also, my question is, we're going to Also, my question is, we're going to change all the catch basins and some of these drains, make them bigger?
There would be increased inlet capacity as well, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Aaron.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
You're taking Sarah, and the water coming off of Sarah is going to go north, and Victoria then is going to go south.
That would be correct.
Because right now, Sarah goes south.
Sarah...
So you're switching, you're taking the water from Sarah and still pushing it to the north and going to start south at Victoria Lane?
That's correct. But so everyone understands, during the low flows for the, you know, the first amount of water while the system has capacity, Sarah currently comes south. But when that system surcharges, when it bubbles over, it gets to a certain elevation, and when it overtop Prospect, the bigger flows actually overland flow to the north.
Right. And that's what was happening. That little volcano in the corner there was just, and all the water was just adding to Prospect, and I...
So we're going to seek to capture all of it and bring it to the storage facility as soon as we can to the north, from Sarah going north. Can we move on? So this concept plan, as presented with those levels of storage, is an expensive number, okay? All in for, you know, it's these columns in green here, the 7-acre feet to the south, the 16-acre feet to the north. There'd be the storage, there's the conveyance cost for each, and then there's that discharge cost, which includes the lift stations on each. So each of these systems would have three components. The total for this system would be about $23,900,000. We also have the parallel pipe on Gilbert's that we discussed at about $700,000. The rear yard storm sewer on the, that's the one on ComEd, is about $330,000. So all told, we're a hair shy of $25 million, which is a gigantic number. And believe me, when I first emailed the memo to city staff last week, we were in a phone conference within 30 minutes because the number was surprising.
Is there any, any hope at all to any kind of grant money for this?
I think there could be. In fact, you know, one of the things, I don't want to be a prognosticator on what happens in Springfield in November, but there's always rumors of a capital bill coming soon, too. That would maybe be a really good source, since there's not a ton of direct stormwater grants, but there are some. And there's one that applications will start being accepted after October 1st. We've already had conversations with city staff through FEMA on that.
I would like to see, you know, at least come back with something from, not to deviate from what the mayor wants to talk about, but I would like to see something come back from the Department of the Army Corps of Engineers about that. I see islands out there. I'm not an idiot. Everybody knows there's deposits. Deposits are left in a river for a reason. They haven't been dredged. So I'd like to see something happen there, too, and see what kind of recourse we come back with.
Might be something where you might even want to engage DuPage County for support for a regional project.
Anything.
Mayor?
Regarding the capital bill, if it comes, we just had discussions this week at DMMC. Stormwater really not on that capital bill. I mean, we're actually going to try and push it on there as an ask and try and get some of that, but technically, that's not going, not going to happen as far as the capital bill. I do have a follow-up question, though.
Okay.
When you first brought us the project and ComEd, how many acre feet was that?
It was 9 acre feet.
9 acre feet. So that's why we were hitting 9 to 12 million dollars.
Right.
And then when I saw this memo come through, I almost fell out of my seat. Okay.
The only problem, the only reason I keep asking you about the Army Corps of Engineers is because I'm tired of walking, driving up and down Milwaukee Avenue, seeing them do stuff for Palatine, Prospect Heights, Des Plaines. Everyone has had river, Des Plaines River issues with flooding in the future or in the past. Nobody floods anymore over there. Wonder why? Not helping us. We have problems. Our residents flood all the time. For the past 40, 50 years, we flooded. But is anybody sitting here looking at the river depth and doing anything about the river? No one. Not since I've lived there. So I mean, I would like to see something done about the sediment. Nobody else is up and down the river, you know, up and down the river here is complaining about it because they all seem to be adequate.
I believe the council is all familiar with Steve Zaner. He is on the board or the steering committee for the Salt Creek Works, the watershed group. Maybe that's a venue that could make the appropriate request like that. I will ask Mr. Zaner about that.
Mr. Catalano first.
So let's get this straight, then. We're looking at $24,930,000, and that's going to be a 50-year?
This is going to be, for the 100-year storm, all ponding other than Gilbert would be less than 12 inches.
And that's going to be the south, the north and the south?
The north and the south, correct. Now...
And is that also including the street repaving?
That would include the street restoration as well, yes. And I did calculate it. It would be about 3 miles of streets in this project area that would, you know, you probably wouldn't have to spend your road program funds on those streets if it came out of this...
So if there's any streets that are going to be resurfaced, we're not going to do them at this point?
At the very least, resurfaced, a couple of them, like Potter Street, where a lot of the storage would be, that would be completely rebuilt.
Okay.
Mr. Mercino?
Well, first, I just wanted to compliment Robinson Engineering. This is, we gave you directive, and you delivered directive, and came out with a very prescriptive plan on what we need to do. This is reality, so Catalano's point. You talked a little bit about regionally, some things we can do to partner or look into, but then you also mentioned FEMA. Do you see a reality with FEMA with us trying to appeal to them for any kind of money?
There is a grant program through FEMA. In fact, the city has taken advantage of it on occasions in the past, I believe, with certain property buyouts and things like that. They made a, there's a new wrinkle in it this year where there are some costs, some new costs that are eligible. And so we were thinking, you know, we don't know for sure how it would rate among other applications, but we have talked with staff. In fact, I'm going to be providing a proposal that would be involved with preparing that grant application.
And you guys could help, sorry, you guys could help staff with that?
Yes.
You would help draft that? Okay, cool. Thank you.
Mr. Jacob?
As far as the, with the $23 million...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Before we get too far into this, I think we're jumping ahead. We're all excited. We're all ready to write checks and whatnot, get grants and whatnot, but he's not done, and that's really maybe not the number. So maybe we should save some questions until he wraps up.
Is that fair enough for you, Mr....
Well, I alluded earlier, when I first sent the memo that's in your packets last week, I was on a conference call with the two gentlemen to my left within 30 minutes because the number caught us, caught folks by surprise. And we talked about how else might we be able to reduce this number? Are there any other options that could be presented to the council that might be worthy of consideration if we could bring this number down a little bit? And that's, I think, what Jeff is alluding to here. And so we did. We did a little bit more modeling even the first part of this week to see what that could be. With that, we looked at, you know, setting a height of how much flooding is was somewhat arbitrary. How, let's keep it under a foot, okay? It seemed to make sense a few months ago when it was discussed. But, so we took a little closer look at what are the critical elevations? I mentioned earlier about foundation, top of foundation levels and things along those lines. What is the level of water where flooding is going to get in someone's home and cause real damage, okay? So this is along Prospect Street or Prospect Avenue. You can see that several homes here have an elevation of about 691. The lowest one, which I believe is 253 Prospect, is only 690. So that's a foot lower than many of his neighbors. That's usually the property that takes the most damage when we get water. Over here at Georgetown, these parking lot elevations are even lower than that by a couple of feet. We've got elevations down here in the 688 range, 689 range. Over on Miller Lane, the two homes that, you know, through which those culverts go through to Squaw Creek, the lowest one is down here at 68674. So we started to think about things. Instead of trying to solve for an arbitrary solution, let's see if we can look at what would be the minimum level of protection so that we'd be very confident that homes wouldn't take water, and let's see how much ponding that would mean in the street versus that 12-inch number. So what we would recommend, and we believe the computer model is pretty accurate, right? I mean, the visual evidence is good, but you always want to have a safety factor when you're doing any type of design in any kind of field. The industry standard would be, there's a term called freeboard in floodway engineering that's often used. And in this particular case, you know, you'd want to have a minimum 1-foot safety factor, which means whatever we would design, we would want that highest water level to remain at least 1 foot below the lowest elevation on every block, okay? So in a perfect world, that's what we would strive for and see if that is a cost-effective solution, if it's a technically viable solution, and so forth. So, let's see, let's listen to that. These are the same numbers you saw previously in just a little smaller chart, zeroed down to these three locations. So in the existing conditions, these are these elevations. That 100-year event at 691 is almost a foot higher than this foundation elevation. It's knocking on the door at several other homes here. Down here at Squaw Creek, 68632 is knocking on the door here. Now, that's the other thing. While the computer model is a very good representation, it's the same way with that 100-year storm. You know, there's not a single thing that defines that. It's a range of things. So you don't want to try to be too precise with this. You want to have that safety factor. So with that in mind, what we would suggest is that we would never want to see that high water level above 689 on Prospect, 690 on Potter, 68575 on Miller, each of which are about a foot below the lowest one on the block, okay? So we're just calling that the damage protection elevation for purposes of these next few slides. So this is that same chart that you saw previously if we went to the less than 12-inch. What we note is that at these three elevations, if you remember, 689, 690, 68575, these are all significantly below that. They're 6, 7, 8 inches below an elevation that would cause any damage to anybody, okay? So we wanted to take a look at, now, there was those elevations that I just recounted for you.
Well, one side was there.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Could you step back one more side? So you said, I understand this. With what you're showing, does that mean that we'll just have to have more tolerance for this kind of water level more often?
Yes, and for that 100-year event, it would be a slightly higher than 12-inch elevation.
Okay, right.
For the 50-year event, instead of being zero as it shows here, it might be a couple inches.
Right, because, yeah, because your models show that it's changed, right?
Correct.
So we'll see more water than we normally would under the first plan.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Correct.
Thanks.
So we took a look initially, and the parts that you see here in yellow are just the existing conditions. So you've got a comparison. These are those high flooding levels. The first option we took, we looked at, and remember also, that first plan was 7-acre feet on the south side, 16-acre feet on the north side, for a total of 23-acre feet of storage, okay? The first one we looked at, what if we tried to skimp it a little bit? We only put 4-acre feet on the south, and we put 9-acre feet on the north, okay? And these would be the resulting elevation. It's not bad, but we've still got a couple of them here that are above the damage elevation that we would strive to never exceed, okay? You can see that there would be a foot of water on Prospect for the 50-year storm. There would still be over 2 feet, about 27 inches for the 100-year. We didn't find that to be acceptable based on the experiences that we've had so far. It would be a cost savings of $7 million, but it wouldn't fully solve the problem for you. So it's not, we didn't think, you know, there's obviously some other intersections that would have issues, too. The next thing we did is, is that, is there a question?
Go ahead, Aaron.
Okay. The next thing we did is we kept that south storage at 4-acre feet. We increased the north to 12-acre feet. We've pretty much gotten better here at Potter Street, but we're still almost a half a foot above that damage elevation on Prospect, about 6/10ths of a foot for the 50-year storm, almost 2 feet for the 100-year storm. And we've got some, you know, still some flooding here on Miller. Oh, and as we look at these, I didn't copy those Gilbert improvements. Please ignore the Gilbert's on this. That would still be the separate improvement. So these are the key areas that are still struggling to be protected. This option here would get our total cost, instead of that 24 number, down to about 20. We then looked at a couple more, and I promise it's easier to last two because we're going to get to a recommendation really quick. Adding 16, you know, that's 16 feet to the north, but only putting 4 feet on the south instead, 4-acre feet instead of 7, gives us pretty good results. You know, we'd be about 15 inches at the 100-year storm on Prospect. We would be about a foot on Miller, a half a foot for the 50-year storm. We are below the damage elevation on all three of them, and we save about $2.1 million from that baseline cost. So our total project cost is down here at 22,830 now, okay? We looked at that, and then we looked at one more.
Pat said he's going to work for free for a couple of years.
We looked at one more.
I second that.
We decided to mix it up a little bit. We said, now let's hold the 7-acre feet to the south, and instead of putting 16 on the north, let's only put 12. This one came out, oh, about the same here, you know, 1.36 feet, 1.3 feet for the 100-year, a little bit of ponding for the 50-year. But look at these other two. At this location, Erman and Sarah would still get a foot of water at the 50-year, at the 100-year storm, but on this solution, they barely get anything for basically what's an extra inch or two of water on those other two locations at the 100-year event. So, and I'm sorry, this is, this got cut off, but this option here is $700,000 less than this one. So all told, you know, it seems that this may be the optimal solution to solve all the different locations to an acceptable level, a little bit more than 12 inches of ponding, but not much more, you know, maybe 15 to 16 inches instead of under 12.
Now that we're adding Sarah going to the north, we don't want to, you know, take away from the, you know, as far as storage. I mean, we're adding more water. So would that handle the extra street going into that?
The hydraulic model, you know, upon which all of these results are based, it takes all of that into account. And so these would be the results based on that. You know, quite honestly, we would think that either one of these two options would be acceptable. This one, because it's $700,000 less, because it does a better job at Erman and Sarah with very minimal change at the other locations, we felt would be the recommended one. But either one of those two options would work, and they would both be between $2 or $3 million, $2 and $3 million less than that baseline option.
Any other questions?
There's a couple more still.
Mr. Murmurs?
Yeah, there's still a couple more. I'll talk about phasing, so then we can have the complete picture.
Right, continue.
Are we assuming that we're going on the recommended based on your phasing?
That will be the council's decision, obviously, but...
I meant with what you're showing there.
With what we go forward with the phasing and the cost estimates, yes, we're basing it on the recommended.
Okay, thank you.
So this is that exhibit that you saw previously, along Prospect, okay? This is that 100-year storm elevation under existing conditions. I'm going to zoom in on just, this is Potter. George is right off the screen here. This is just that one block of Prospect with Georgetown and some of the homes that see the worst flooding. Now, that 689 damage elevation, which is this modified plan of these last few slides, you can see how big this area is here, right, of inundation? All of Georgetown parking lots soaked, home, you know, the water going past the homes in many cases for the 100-year storm. If we implement the recommended solution, this is what that area of inundation becomes, much smaller, much smaller and much shallower, where that other exhibit, the worst parts are over 3 feet deep of water. The deepest part of the water here is 16 inches. That doesn't mean all of it is 16 inches, just at the deepest location. So that's the improvement that you would be achieving. So, that's the improvement that you would be achieving. And look, you're not, you're barely out of the right-of-way, except for in a couple scant locations here. Some of this because of the driveways into the parking lot and the curbs are not here. Some of this does leak into the parking lots, but nowhere near the last exhibit, which was all the way, the entire parking lot or more.
So, what you're saying...
Mr. Musina?
So, what you're saying is, in your video, it'd be somebody riding a bicycle through that pond eventually, versus a little electric car, 16 inches.
16 inches with big wheels.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Calano?
But you still have homes here with...
You can't get rid of 100% of the water.
Yeah, but still, you still have homes that are close to the foundation.
It's close, but it would be at least a foot below the top of the foundation, at least a foot. Remember here that this is the edge of the water, so it's probably, you know, it's an inch or two outside of the right-of-way. It might be, you know, anywhere between eight and 16 inches all through here.
And then, to get, that's a mention, that your projection from the screen prior, that's 50-year storm?
Uh, it was a 100-year storm.
That was the 100, prior to this?
Yes.
And this is 100-year?
This is the 100-year storm. So, this is a storm that's bigger than the one in May.
So, we're talking about a 100-year storm that hasn't happened yet?
Correct.
Versus a 50-year storm? What would a 50-year storm even look like with this?
Well, in fact, I, I'll show you how it'll look in this last chart.
Less?
Zero.
Okay.
And that's also including Lincoln Court, too?
Lincoln Court would have zero flooding under all of these, all of these options, based on, and what, you know, part of that is to install a 24-inch sewer. It's going to have to go between a couple homes to get out to the other system, but yes.
That's what I wanted to, that was the 100-year we were showing.
That's correct.
So, that's the worst-case scenario would be that, leaves them out with the new instruction, that, so 50 would even be less than that.
It would be less than that.
25 would be a lot less than that. It wouldn't even be flooding in the streets.
Under the recommended improvement, even if there was a little bit of ponding right by the catch basins, the ponding level on the 50-year storm, this is the one that we got in May, would not even get out of the streets. It would be contained within the curbs.
All right. Please, Mr. Jacob.
Yeah, I'll get over here.
Aaron.
Yes?
When you're looking at this picture, I mean, we're already over $20 million. I mean, if we did the original, which was the highest price, what would that look like? Would there be no water there?
No, it would be about nine inches, about nine inches. It would be bear, it'd be between the sidewalks.
That picture is 100-year storm, worst-case scenario, with the fixing, which we haven't had yet.
This is with the fixing option that was going to save about $3 million?
Which we haven't had a hundred.
The original one, it would be a smaller area than this. It would be contained within the sidewalks.
That's 28.
Yes, yeah, it would be an extra $3 million.
Mr. Jacob?
Is there, in this scenario, is there still houses that are going to flood?
No.
There's no houses that will flood where this one?
No.
Okay.
Could you clarify any kind of foundation damage that might be existing with that?
I'll, I asked him to mention it. Like, when you, for the people at home, when you talk about no foundation damage, could you just explain in layman's terms what that means?
Well, a foundation damage is probably a separate, what it means is that the water level in that 100-year event would never get closer than, or never get higher than one foot below the lowest top of foundation on the block. So, if you remember that exhibit where, you know, we had a few homes that had 691 elevation, the lowest one had 690.11. That exhibit here, the highest the water would get is 689. It'd be a foot below the lowest foundation, the lowest basement entrance.
Still below the basement entrance? I guess my point, see, the likely, no likelihood of getting in the basement.
No likelihood of getting, or coming in over the top of the foundation.
Okay.
And I know I've...
So, it's tonnage, I mean, dry.
I mean, I've mentioned this before, and I don't know where it's ever gone, but we've talked about well water or water table in the area. Has anybody done a study on the water table in that area?
Uh, not to my knowledge.
I mean, we have wells in the area. We can open them up and drain them down, along with the river dredging, water, well water draining out, helping water recede into the soil instead of sitting on top of the soil because it's flooding.
As we're going to...
And this whole thing, I mean, there's a collaboration of everything that needs to be looked at, not just, this is the fix, because who knows? Maybe this doesn't work. So, if I say this will work, you know, I pay $28 million or $22 million, and then tomorrow comes and it looks, it's covering all those, I'm going to come back and say, well, what happened? You tell me nobody's flooding, and it floods.
I understand. What we're about to discuss is the phasing of this project, and it will be a, no matter which option is selected, it is going to be a multi-year endeavor.
Right.
And I would guess it would be up to the city if you wanted to also supplement that effort with additional groundwater investigations, you know, obviously looking at Salt Creek dredging, things like that. Those can go on a parallel path.
All right. Mr. Sorrentino?
You know, if I may, the city manager mentioned earlier that, let Aaron finish his complete presentation, because a lot of these questions that we have may be answered, and I think the most important part about this for all of us here and all of the folks at home, especially the residents of Ward Two and Three, is when you're going to do it and when are you going to be done with it? So, when you're done with your presentation, we may all have somewhat of an answer to those two questions. So, if we could just hold the questions until Aaron's done, I think it could expedite this whole process. Thank you.
Mr. Aaron, continue, please.
That was a great intro to the next slide, Alderman Sorrentino. Thank you. Project phasing, and I just mentioned this, but, you know, this is a complex project. This is a disruptive project over a significant number of residential streets in Wards Two and Three. This is a costly project, and so, there is not, unless you want to just have the whole place literally look like a war zone, there's not really a way to get this project done in one year or probably even two years. This is a multi-year effort, and we're going to go into that a little bit. The northern portion of this, because we did so much of the front-end work with the ComEd option, one of the things that we also did subsequent to our last presentation here in July, city staff and I did meet with Georgetown Homeowners Association. We talked about the concept of being able to utilize either their parking lots or their courtyard to supplement the storage that we were able to fit in the Potter and Prospect right-of-ways. And it was only one meeting, but I'd say that they were very receptive, as they were at the July committee meeting when they were here in attendance, and I think we have an understanding that their preference would be, is if we do work together, would be to put the supplemental storage in the parking lots. You know, we believe we can get at least six to eight acre feet in the parking lots. Same thing, though, it would be disruptive. It would need to be sequenced in the right way. So, it's just an example of how the northern scope is much further along than the southern scope, which we always knew would be a future scope, but it really started, we just, in the last two months, have really started looking at it in earnest. And as an example, we haven't even decided exactly where the detention would be. Would it be in the streets? Would it be in the park? Would it be in vacant lots? These are questions that can get answered over the coming year. There's not a rush to try to do that by spring, for example. So, the southern scope is still preliminary, but it will be known as part of this process. As we build either the north or the south, actually both, it'll be important, just like we've already started at the far downstream end with the Squaw Creek improvements right now, we would build this from the downstream up. You know, if we build these, all these 100-year conveyance sewers, but we don't have storage yet, it's not going to solve the problem. We need to put the discharges in first with the lift stations. We need to have the storage, then we extend the conveyance to the streets. So, it's a multi-step process. It all needs to be coordinated properly. They don't have to all necessarily be built simultaneously, but they need to be built, sequenced in order, in order for them to be properly benefiting the city. Utility conflicts will be an issue. You know, part of what we will do, our best to do is minimize those conflicts, but utility conflicts cause delays. Utility conflicts cost money. ComEd and NICOR never caused delays, maybe not in Wooddale, I'm not sure. But these are going to be important to manage effectively on the front end as part of a critical path schedule for this overall effort. Traffic control, driveway access, school buses, garbage trucks, all of these things will require coordination and a lot of planning, as much as just putting the shovel in the ground when we get to that point. So, this is a multi-year, multifaceted endeavor, without a doubt. What we would envision as Phase One, and we think could reasonably be completed over a two-year period, is the northern segment of what we discussed. This would include the lift station, the discharge from the lift station down to Squaw Creek. This is down Dalewood Avenue, the northern detention facility, and the sewers, the conveyance sewers that would come from these locations, along with the Lincoln Court sewer that we just talked about a little bit. All of this could feasibly be done over about a two-year period, and the cost for that is about $9.8 million. Now, these numbers include design and construction engineering. They include a 20% contingency as well. So, we're trying to be as conservative as we can. We realize that the financial impacts of this are, you know, considerable. We're doing our best to be conservative on the front end.
Mr. Wesley?
Is that the price tag for someone to oversee their practice?
Construction engineering, yes. Yeah, 6.5% design, 8% construction engineering, 20% contingency. What this does not include, and this probably pertains more to the southern than the northern at this point, it does not include land acquisition. So, if there was to be property acquisitions, things along those lines, it doesn't include that. Somewhat unpredictable at this point. Phase Two, oh, excuse me, a couple more points here. The key here is that while all three of these components for Phase One wouldn't necessarily, it could be three separate construction contracts. They could be let at different times. They really need to be designed as one package. The lift, all the hydraulics that would be necessary to include in the overall design, you really need to have all the details of the design of that lift station component, the storage component, and the conveyance sewer component all work together. Doesn't have to necessarily be the north and the south both at the same time, but the whole north system really should be designed together. Each system should be designed together.
Mr. Woods?
Where do I begin? So, going down Dalewood, we're going to, those, that's going to be a 24-inch pipe in the ground from...
Most likely in the street pavement.
In the street pavement, from Gilbert.
No, 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 from Potter, from Potter North.
And then go down Dalewood, and at, what elevation is that pipe?
Oh, at the top of my head, I don't know, but I remember that our Squaw Creek elevation would be somewhere in the six, mid 680, 685-ish, 684-ish. It depends how deep it ends up being, but it would need to, it would need to meet the Squaw Creek elevation. Mark, do you remember that about what that elevation?
So, that, so my concern, obviously, is that now you're going to convey more water, or same amount of water faster, if you will, to what is already a low point and is already getting overrun from, what would that be, then, the south section from Ward Three?
It would actually be, it would actually be less water slower, because remember, anything that gets here is sitting in this detention facility first. This would be a controlled release. The water's getting there now overland from George Street, coming over ComEd. It's flooding there now. The flooding part of this would be stored in here, and then it would be a controlled release that would, that would be discharged into Squaw Creek.
Mr. York, did you have something?
So, for example, if we had this event on the, today, we had three inches of water, the water would go into the normal storm sewers and go to Squaw Creek like it normally would. Anything that's more than the storm sewers can handle will then be going into the detention system, underground detention system, and those pumps will not turn on until that detention system gets to a high enough level that we need to start evacuating that detention system in order to put more water into it. So, it may be Friday or Saturday or Sunday before we start pumping that water out for the next storm event.
Mr. Woods?
Very similar to what they do at the Wooddale Iteska reservoir.
Yes, this is essentially a miniature deep tunnel project, really.
Mr. Woods?
And so, in fairness, so, but unless you take in the other part, right, so these calculations, this conversation's based on the totality of the program, right, doing the whole thing?
Mm-hmm.
Because right now, we put that in as Phase One, and you get the rain, and everything still is going to rush overland from the other side, correct?
No, i-if we, if we were to install Phase One, everything north of Sarah should not experience flooding. Everything south of there, because there's been no improvements down there, that would still act the same way it does today.
Which is, again, travel overland to Squaw Creek, across the ComEd.
The south, the south area goes through the pipe that goes eastward to ComEd, to Gilbert Street, and then directly to Salt Creek. Over there by, you know, Forest Preserve Drive and Victoria, those blocks down there, they don't come to the north. They go east ultimately.
All right, so then, maybe I'm confused, a lot of times I am. So, then, it's almost what you're telling me is this $9 million solves most of the problems?
It solves the problems that are north of Sarah.
There?
All right. I thought the water from Potter Street was going down Potter to Addison Road. Now, it's going down Dalewood. I have the same concerns. We, wait, hold on, let me finish, really. You're telling me nine acre feet, basically, 3 million gallons of water sitting right there? And how deep is that storage? Is it 10-foot deep?
It's going to be a little, a little deeper than that. It's, the bottom of that chamber is going to be about 17?
17.
Yeah, about 15 feet deep.
So, if I stand inside there, I can put Brad on my shoulders and touch the ceiling?
We can take a photo.
Three of you up there, 15 feet.
Don't do it, turn right at the rain.
Right. No, but I thought that water was going to be conveyed, let it go. Stuff from Potter was going to go towards Addison Road and then hook up, because I thought that's what it was happening before.
Gilbert goes to Addison?
Gilbert also, but I thought...
Potter, Potter goes north to Squaw Creek.
Yep.
Potter goes, there's a series of sewers through here.
But it doesn't go to Addison. It never has.
Okay, it never did, okay. I thought that's one of their goals, was to send it to Addison and get another inlet or something.
One, the...
Mr. York?
Because we were talking about putting it by the school.
That was one of the options, of taking it there via lift station...
Right.
And pumping it there so it can sit in the storage chambers at that location.
At the school.
At the school, and then pump another lift station to pump out. This is a different alternative.
Because my fear is, I think it's what Alderman Woods is talking about, is so, when this water starts pumping, right, we're still going to get other water that naturally goes that way and crosses. When, I'm just curious, when we get to 2 million gallons, is when the pumps turn on? And it starts pumping it out?
Honestly, it will vary based on, and that will be part of the design to determine that exact level that we would set for the...
Because that's an, once it goes into Squaw Creek, it's open, right? It's going through, how many, how many residents do we have to get so we can easements, so we can fix that up, that area? That's an open deal right there.
It would go to the channel where we're doing the improvements right now. Those easements, the city was able to obtain earlier this year.
Right, but that's an open creek still, right? It's not like it's an underground storage. And I know you guys are doing all the modeling and all that stuff. I'm a little nervous on how much water, when does that water, those 3 million gallons, start pumping out into that little Squaw Creek? And then, it's still a bottleneck to get through, across Irving Park and go into the ponds and the creek, right?
It's not going to pump all 3 million at once, it's going to pump it slowly.
Right, it would be a controlled release, and ultimately, today, all the water that would be sitting in that storage facility is sitting in, it's sitting on Prospect, it's sitting on Potter, it's sitting in people's basements, it's sitting on the ComEd right-of-way. It's sitting in, it's all there, and it goes when it's able to go. It would be very similar in that regard. It's not, it's not necessarily going to add more water or increase flood depths along Squaw Creek or anywhere downstream. That wouldn't happen. That's the whole purpose of the detention, is... along Squaw Creek or anywhere downstream. That wouldn't happen. That's the whole purpose of the detention, is have the water sit until there's available capacity to let it out. Mark, is there any?
Yeah, part of the design is actually reducing the flow rates to Squaw Creek by a number of CFS, cubic feet per second in the various storm events. So every storm event that we've modeled does have a slight reduction in the amount of flow rate that Squaw Creek will be experiencing.
Mr. Woods.
So, if you could back up, to show me where you're saying cut off, what was the street, Arlene, or?
Serra.
Serra.
Serra's.
So I can get it visually in my head?
Serra was where that little volcano was.
Serra is the second street south of Potter.
Serra is here.
Okay, so all that's going-
That would come to the north.
And where does that go now? Same place, goes to the north town Prospect?
The low flows go to the east, ultimately to Gilbert, but when the, when it backs up, and it goes over a certain elevation on Prospect, the overland flow goes to the north. And then to Squaw Creek.
So, right now, when the, when we have the volcano and it overlands to the north, it won't volcano, there'll be another pipe in there at an elevation within the manhole itself, which will then take that water and then start sliding north to go down to this detention center.
Okay, so now when we look at Georgetown Shopping Center, George Street, the townhouses, all that stuff, where you see the water that'll march across the ComEd easement to Miller and straight to Squaw Creek, that water won't happen anymore? Is that what we're saying?
It's not gonna happen overland. It'll ultimately happen through this facility here.
The stuff to the north will still, will still go the same way that it was, and it always has.
So I'm still gonna have the overland some sheeting, so depending, that's, so that's my concern, right? So how much did we eliminate that's going overland, which is what caused the Squaw Creek waterfalls over there? Versus how much are we containing here in Georgetown townhomes, not shopping center, and then directing down Potter to Dalewood?
Your concern about this area up here?
Right. So none of that's gonna, so that's my, I'm at a disadvantage, I don't have a pointer.
But the, the water that's going that way at a certain point is going to then stop going down those pipes and go towards the detention center.
This is Squaw Creek, right?
Yes.
He's saying, is this gonna go this way still?
Yeah, it's still gonna go that way.
There's culverts that go under here. This water's still gonna go here.
Right.
But what, what will happen, is a lot of this water on Prospect, which currently goes into, I think it's a forty-two inch north, and is part of this system, we're gonna pull that out of there and put it in the detention facility.
Alright, so, you can see my concern, right? I get it, but you're not really showing it, alright.
You're turning water off of George, from flowing all the way to George, you're going into the detention area.
A good portion of the water that's on Prospect that currently goes to George will come to the detention area, yes.
So that water won't be flowing over to Squaw Creek anymore, filling up that basin?
It will, but at a later point after it gets pumped out.
Right, after it gets pumped out, right. Mayor.
So Aaron, you have all these new pipes, sixty inches, forty-two inch types. When are these going in? This is another phase, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
So right now, we're just talking about, I wanna go, right, I wanna make sure I'm understanding correctly. Because originally, you had said nine acre feet, correct? That was the original prices?
This includes, this Phase One includes nine acre feet on the north side. It includes the lift station, this is just the north half. All those other blocks are behind this information, okay? Phase Two would be what you just referenced, Mr. Mayor. This would be the conveyance sewers in the southwest area, coming to a southern detention facility, however that gets configured. Another lift station, which would pump to a discharge pipe, which we think we could, you know, after this water is detained, we believe we can pump it to that thirty inch that ultimately ends up here in Gilbert. So this is Phase Two, which we also believe could be accomplished in about a two-year period, and it would have a lot of the same parameters that Phase One did, at a total cost of a little bit under nine million dollars for this segment of the work. The Gilbert's line, the ComEd line, are completely independent of this system that's kinda gotta at least get designed together. These could be done in Phase Three, these could be done in Phase-
One?
Seventeen, Phase One, whatever you would prefer.
Might as well do them in one.
ComEd and ask them for the money for it, too.
Phase Three, and let me go back here real quick. If we put four acre feet to the south, nine acre feet to the north, this would be much better than it is today, but in those large storms, the fifty-year would still probably see about a foot of water on Prospect. The hundred-year would see a little over two feet if we stopped after Phase Two. Phase Three would be to add an additional three acre feet to the north and an additional three acre feet to the south. That is what would get us to that exhibit that showed the ponding being restricted to about sixteen inches and staying under that damage elevation in all cases. So this Phase Three, it could be done all at once. It could be done as Phase Three, one year, and Phase Four, the following year. This would be a decision that would play into the financing and the construction phasing and so forth.
So total overall, we're looking at twenty-two million?
Uh, we're looking, I'm gonna give you a summary sheet here in just a second. I can come back to this if you wanna look at that. We're looking at twenty-two for the main underground storage projects. A million, this million is the Gilbert sewer plus that ComEd rear yard sewer. So all in, about twenty-three for these improvements.
Mr. Sina.
To be clear, that doesn't include land acquisition?
It does not.
No, because that didn't include, like, that didn't include, those, those projects you just showed did not include land acquisition.
They do not include land acquisition, that's correct.
So you don't have to worry about that.
No, no, you do have to worry about it, yeah.
Well, no, he just said we didn't need land acquisition, we're not buying homes.
Correct.
Easements are a different story than purchasing properties.
Might we purchase the two vacant lots on Forest Preserve Drive? That's a, that's an option.
But that's the only two properties that you would have to purchase.
We're gonna need to buy easements from some homeowners, correct?
Or maybe they would grant easements if we're solving the flooding problem.
Mayor.
So if the empty properties are on Forest Preserve, why do we have to go down Gilbert? I mean, because I think, like, we even own one of the properties at the corner of Forest Preserve and Addison Road already.
We do.
But the issue is on Gilbert is that the pipe-
To the creek?
We need to, no, we need to alleviate the flooding on Gilbert, so that's additional piping that needs to go there to hold that water on Gilbert.
As I mentioned earlier, the whole, the southern portion of this is at a preliminary concept stage. It's only been really studied in detail those last two months. Those options, this is why we were proposing the southern half to be Phase Two. If Phase One takes a couple of years to get done concurrently, we would be, you know, examining all the different locations in the southern area for these detention options. That would be a decision that would be made during that first two years while the construction is going on on the north port.
Alright.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Wesley, do you have a question for now?
On the price tag, it's not coming, giving you the parking lots and roads, huh?
It is.
It is.
Mr. Mayor.
Aaron, so I know you're proposing nine acre feet and on the first phase, right? I'm gonna, I'm looking at this like we did the treatment plan, right? We engineer for the future and build for now kind of deal. So, what if it was five, you know, because you're gonna go use the parking lots, right? So there's what, three parking lots on that Potter Street?
I believe there's five. Four on Potter and one off of Prospect.
Right, but I mean, right on, so if we used three of those and did half up north and the other half on the south, our goal is always to make sure, try and keep the water out of people's houses, right? And out of the parking lots, so cars aren't moving when, when we get those floods. I've heard at Georgetown, as the water elevates, cars start bumping into each other because they're just floating over, right? And if we get that storm like we got, that three inches in an hour and a half, are you telling me that we can't keep the water away from the homes and, because no matter what, you just said it yourself, we build a hundred-year storm, we're still going to flood. And I can hear it already. Well, what, are you guys crazy?
It's a bowl.
Twenty-five million dollars and you're still flooding? I just wanna make sure people understand, even at the Cadillac or the Ferrari, whatever you wanna call it, we're still, the street is still flooding. My question becomes, if we only did the five acre feet to the north and four acre feet to the south, see how it goes, and, I mean, either way, we gotta phase it, right?
Five acre feet to the north would not be enough of an improvement to get the results that you'd be seeking. We really believe that nine acre feet is necessary for that first phase of the north. That, that improvement on its own would still result in about sixteen inches of flooding during the hundred-year event. I don't think the sixteen inches is gonna be enough to have cars float. It's gonna be a nuisance, for sure. It'll take a little bit of time to drain the street, but it won't get in the homes, and it won't cause cars to float.
Wesley.
Can we have the finance guy try to figure out how we're gonna pay for this first, I mean, break it down? I mean, really, guys, how we got basic answer, which we're all-
We're paying it back over a hundred years, waiting for that hundred-year storm.
I still have the chair, so hold up, hold up, hold up, no discussion. Mr. Cal, do you have a question? What was your question?
My question is, if we're gonna make a decision, what's-
We haven't even-
What can we find out in word or money made from it? Because there's also a local trust loan that we haven't checked in.
Well, we haven't checked into that, we haven't checked into, uh, G8 or second aid.
I'm just looking at the worst scenario, how we're gonna pay for it, whatever project we go with.
Soriano, you're standing there.
I'd like to make a motion to go forward with Phase One over the two-year period at the recommended price tag up there of, I think it was like nine million?
No, it's twenty-three million.
Twenty, twenty-three million?
Phase One was nine point nine.
One is nine million, the project one is-
And you wanted to include the Gilbert Street along with that ComEd little piece in there, right?
Absolutely.
Phase One is not up, it's not up, if you can't, just do Phase One, you can't vote for just Phase One. Well, then you can't second Phase One, this is Phase One. No, because what did he vote for? He voted for Phase One.
I made a motion to move forward with Phase One over the two-year period at nine million eight hundred thousand.
But also including the Gilbert Street.
A little piece on Gilbert Street with the-
But we have to include Phase Two. We have to include the north and the south.
That's not even in this, correct?
No, Phase Two is this slide here. Phase Two is this slide here, which would be eight point nine six?
That's not including Gilbert, or it is including?
Yes, this does include Gilbert. This includes Gilbert and the ComEd sewer.
So they say, that's Phase Two, though?
Correct.
So they're all already sitting there passing Phase One without Gilbert? That's what he's-
Gilbert is not part of Phase One.
Gilbert to Phase One. So you're adding one million, two phases, so we go back one, Phase One would not be nine million, it would be ten million.
Eleven million.
Eleven million. Correct?
Could you add Gilbert's to Phase One?
You can do it, I wanna double check what- Yeah, Phase One A. We would wanna double check.
Gilbert's as a standalone, prior to the detention being done, I wanna make sure we still have the same results. We would model that for you.
Right.
Could you go back to the recommended amount where that check was? You know, the recommended-
Sure.
Yeah. That's the recommended amount that-
Right.
Yes.
And that's Phase One and Two, north and south?
It's Phase One and Two, north and south, but it does not, this, the number that's down there in the lower left doesn't include the Gilbert's or the ComEd sewer. This is, so it would be an extra million on top of this number, which is, that number is twenty-two, one thirty.
Okay.
The total number, including Gilbert's and ComEd, is twenty-three, oh sixty.
So we wanna include the Gilbert in there eventually, so I'd like to make that motion.
No, wait, you already have a motion.
Could, could, could I maybe, if I could, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Could, could we maybe get to one last slide, which talked about the schedule a little bit?
One question, one last slide, go ahead. Mayor.
Sorry, but what you were looking at before was nine acre feet and four acre feet.
As the first phase.
But this check mark is nineteen acre feet. So nine and four is thirteen. To go to nineteen, there's something else missing there.
Nine acres, nine acre feet is Phase One on the north.
Right.
Phase Two is four acre feet to the south.
But that's only thirteen, and you're showing nineteen with the checkmark.
And Phase Three, and Phase Three is to add three acre feet to each one of them.
On each side, that gives a total number.
Phase One?
And that's what I was, that's what I was saying earlier, you engineering everything and then go forward. That's what I, that's what I was trying to say.
We would go forward at whatever pace financing would allow.
Let him finish.
So, these are, these are those numbers that we just summarized, the twenty-three million. The question, you know, one of the other questions, is financing, which, you know, I know Brad is here, we've talked about, it's reasonable to do all the work in five years. If financing allows, it could potentially be accelerated to four years. If financing is a little tighter, it could be stretched to six years. It could even be stretched to eight years. These are decisions that, you know, the council would presumably tackle in the, in the next couple of months, to have a full scope and a full schedule that can be communicated and executed. But there's flexibility in the timing of this, and maybe this is a good time for Brad to share his thoughts on the financing side, if that's appropriate.
Mr. Wilson?
I was gonna let Aaron do his last slide first, but-
I've only got one more.
You're not so lucky, you go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Start date. It was, it was very clear when I was here in July that the council seemed very motivated to start construction as soon as spring of 2019. And if that's still the case, we just would wanna communicate that to make that realistic, design on whatever scope you would want to build in 2019 would really need to begin immediately. Because it's only four months before we are, say in February, February bid, March contract award, construction starting, maybe right in accordance with your fiscal year on May first. That would need to really happen extremely fast for that first phase, or whichever scope of work the city would wanna pursue that quickly. It doesn't have to start in spring of nineteen, but that was the impression that, that I left with in July.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I know there's a lot going on here, I guess we'll start in reverse order. You know, if, if we do want to meet that February-March timeline that Mr. Fundage was just referring to, to get on the Gantt diagram here, to get something going early in the fiscal year, that's certainly possible. We would just need direction from the council, because that money wasn't budgeted for this current year. Now, certainly, you know, I don't, there's available cash flow within the CIP to make that happen for projects such as this. But that's just something to take into consideration, be mindful of. Going forward, to Alderman Wesley's question as to how do we pay for this, this project of this magnitude, it really is about pacing and trade-offs. Because if you wanna do the first nine million dollar phase in two years, that would be a bond issue. Debt service on that's gonna be, obviously, market conditions at the time that we would issue it, depending if it's ten million, twelve million, if we throw in the Gilbert portion of it, you're looking anywhere between seven hundred and fifty- you're looking anywhere between seven hundred and fifty and eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars per year for debt service, uh, for twenty years to cover that. Uh, what that means is that for the next twenty years, that's another three quarters, to call it nine hundred thousand dollars worth of project that you couldn't do while you're repaying that debt service. Um, because, you know, you likely want to pledge the, the non-home rule sales tax to that. Uh, after that, the phase two, you could, we could probably break it into four to five years, throw two and a half million dollars at it over the next four to five years, uh, pay cash. But then, that's really the only projects you do for those five years. You have three and a half million dollars worth of funding. You have a million dollars roughly set aside for street resurfacing a year, so there's your CIP conversation for the next five years, which is a short meeting, but I don't know, you're getting a whole lot done. Uh, if you'd capitalize the whole thing, you're looking at, uh, one and a half million per year for twenty years in debt service, collecting about three and a half million right now in the CIP, so you have two million left over for all other projects for the next twenty years, give or take. Uh, of course, including for inflation, new businesses coming into town, things of that nature, but, uh, so, so again, it's really about pacing, uh, scope, and then what you want to, what the trade-offs are. Because there's going to have to be some trade-offs with other projects to get this done, um, in anything short of ten to twelve years, which I think everybody wants to get it done sooner than that. So then there's decisions to be made as to what the, what you want and don't want to do and what you value and don't value in the CIP over the next five to eight years, give or take, to, uh, make this project a reality.
What is our current bond rating?
Triple A.
Triple A.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Murmish.
I'll just circumvent the mayor, this is the part where he goes, see, I told you guys, we had a lot of tough decisions coming up, a lot of projects, and we can't do them all, so I said it quicker than he would.
Mr. Wilson?
So, yeah, just, uh, um, I know there's a lot of numbers and there's some big numbers, um, but just to be clear, I mean, i- it is feasible to do, um, at whatever pace we want to do it at, um, but, uh, to Jeff and an homage to the mayor, yes, it's, what are the choices you want to make to?
How many years out is your, uh, your proposal as a bond rate, is getting a bonded? How many years out would it take to do this whole project? Payback, I mean, I'm sorry. What's the payback on the?
What we've modeled so far, uh, through Spear has been twenty-year bonds.
Twenty years?
I mean, you could certainly go out farther than that, but there's some diminishing returns going out further, you're not, it's not as?
Similar to wastewater?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, I mean.
A- a- and that was a good suggestion, uh, because the IEP has recently begun a stormwater eligibility for, for loan funding. I would say two things, one, um, it probably could be applicable to phase two, phase three. It could be for phase one also, but there's no way you'd start any construction in 2019 if we pursue that route. It does have the advantage of very low interest rates hovering around two percent currently. Um, but the time to put that first shovel in the ground for a loan-funded project would probably be at least eighteen to twenty-four months. Um, you could fund the first part without the loan and the latter parts with the loan, that could be an option as well.
Wesley? So that's a similar model that we do with the treatment plan, we issue the alternate revenue bonds for the first phase, while the, the low-interest loan process was, uh, was going through. So that, it's a similar model to the, well, it is the model that we went with on the treatment plan.
Right. Low-interest loans, oh, I'm sorry, low-interest loans now going two point five, I called down there today. The other thing is, exactly like you summed up, we would have to come up with the first phase. And I agree with you that we, if you go to low-interest loan, you would have to do it in phase two and three. Because there's no way, they're going to tell you flat out that you're on your own for the first phase.
Mr. Mayor?
This is similar to the treatment plant. When we went down for the treatment plant, we couldn't get the loan for the first year, and they told us we couldn't wait. So we had to start, that's why we started with the ten million. And then the second phase was the twenty million, that's where we got the loan. And basically here, we got, so you got another twenty million dollar project, you're talking, so the treatment plant's one point nine, this is going to be another one point two million in, uh, in debt per year. And by the way, the water conversation will be coming up soon, so you guys better start thinking about how we're going to handle this. We gotta be, we're gonna have to, something's going to have to give. We can't do every project in the book. I'm telling you guys, unless you guys want to just vote for a fifty dollar or thirty dollar raise for the water, that's ridiculous. I know you guys aren't going to do that, but we're going to have to make some decisions, and we do want to do the project. So I, I don't think we're going to solve it tonight on how we're going to pay it. Are we gonna, basically, are we going to move forward with the project? And then we're, there's going to probably have to be a workshop to figure this out, because I'm sure nobody up here, and I don't think the staff is ready to figure this out tonight. At first, we were talking nine, ten million dollars, and honestly, I'll be honest, the phasing stuff? Let's face it, you start doing a three million dollar or four million dollar project, and you put a, a project out there for ten million dollars, we could save ten to fifteen percent. That's, on ten million dollars, we could save a million and a half. And I, I'm, I could ask Mr. Wilson if he's going to get us that in interest if we leave the money in the bank. I know he's going to say no, so.
The, the mayor brings a good point, an economy of scale. Um, the other thing is, if, a compressed schedule, I mean, you think about, say, construction inspection, having all that construction inspection consolidated into a three or four-year period instead of an eight or ten-year period, you know, if, if you want full-time inspection, you'll have, you'll save money on that end of it by compressing the schedule as well.
But at the same time, we owe the residents something. Over those years, we owe them something. Mr. Woods?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, so the phase one, without any discussion, what was your thought process on what it is to construct that? Is that one year? Prior to this conversation, in your mind?
What, I, I've got a slide here that we, that we had glossed over before. Th- this kind of shows an overall project timeline. And here we are today, we are just at the very end of the third quarter of 2018. If we wanted to start construction in the spring, as I mentioned, design, which is this blue block, blue box, would really need to start immediately in order to have the first project, which we would suggest would be the lift station and the discharge project, that's the downstream one. The lift station one's going to take a while because there's equipment lead times and, and shop drawing reviews and things of that nature. You know, we would envision, you know, if there was a bidding date sometime in the first quarter of the year, shop drawing review, equipment was probably four to six months. Construction could be done, you know, giving six months for construction, first quarter of 2020. Concurrently, maybe a little bit, a little bit later, bid a second contract that would be the storage component. Same token, construction on that's going to be a little bit longer, but the idea of getting it done in the second or third quarter of 2020 seems realistic. And then the conveyance system, which would be bringing the water to the storage facility, same thing, it would be a similar timeframe. Now, this could all be one contract, you could have it done that way if you chose, or you could break it up into three separate ones. That flexibility exists depending on financing, depending on a lot of different things. But we offset that, do we want economy of scale by putting it all into one? That, that's the first phase. The second phase?
Aaron, hold on one second.
Similar.
Mr. Murmish?
Yeah, I was just going to say, so we can maybe wrap this up tonight, so the direction I'm hearing that we want to have Robinson bring the design contract to wrap up the recommended option, and then the interim, uh, Brad and the, and the team work on the, the financing numbers?
I was going to say, it sounds like a workshop.
Seems similar.
Well, yeah, but we need to, Robinson will bring back the design contract work to continue on, and then we can work on the financial numbers.
I know, I can't make the motion, but this is over two years, you've got, what's it, nine point eight? So that's two fiscal years we're talking about over there. I don't know if we can, and Brad, I'm sure hasn't put the numbers to it, if we can pay for that without going to loans and worrying about raising water rates and all that stuff?
Mr. Wilson?
No.
No?
That was going to be a no.
Well, we'd have to, but that's where we'd have to cut something out of the CIP, Brad, correct?
This, Brad, how?
Okay.
You know what, Brad, how about this? How? Every ward has street construction, right? Millions of dollars of street construction every year. Why can't we push off some of our streets one year? We're not going back to gravel and dirt.
Those are the decisions I told you.
I'm just saying, we, we can push off street projects a year or two to get this started and get this first phase done. We push some of the, push them off a year or two, year five, fiscal year. Mr. Murmish?
Again, he's not going to be able to figure that out tonight.
Right.
No, no, I, I understand, and I understand that.
You forget, we are committed to certain projects, for example, last committee meeting, we talked about ERP. That's over a million dollars, okay? So we're committed to projects right now, so we just can't pick and choose tonight what we're going to do and what we're not going to do. All we can do and pick and choose tonight is, do we want to go with the desired scenario? Yes, there's a, a desire to do that, and let's have Robinson continue on, and we will figure out the financial numbers as we get further along.
So you want to go along with the first, fiscally, right? Those numbers, all those numbers, right there? Aaron?
The first phase?
First, second, and third.
We would, yeah, we, we would proceed with the design of all three of those concurrently.
That's with Gilbert.
Um, Gilbert currently is down here, but we would just, we would slide it up here.
That adds two.
So it's about ten, five if we put Gilbert in the first phase?
How many?
Mr. Calano?
How many homes are affected in phase one and two? Then in Gilbert, what's?
About six hundred.
Six hundred?
Total, I think.
And how many on Gilbert homes?
Probably about thirty on each side of the street there, somewhere about sixty or seventy.
Big component, you've got to do it.
Right.
So is there a motion on the floor?
So I'll make a motion to go with phase one along with Gilbert added into it?
No, you can, phase one and two? Twenty minutes ago.
No, that's, that's not.
How are you funding it?
It's not one and two.
Seventeen, it's eighteen million dollars, how are you funding it? It's phase one with Gilbert added in, was it ten million?
I, I believe at this point, it would be very unrealistic to begin construction of phase two in the spring, under any scenario. I, I think that if, if the suggestion was there for the workshop to figure these other things out, phase two, I think, might be appropriate as a separate motion at that, at that time.
Well, I would like to make a motion for phase one with Gilbert, correct? With Gilbert added in.
So the motion, yeah, so can you amend your?
No, it was ever second.
Mend your motion, Sonny.
I meant my motion to include Gilbert.
Second. Second, we'll carry on, Mayor?
One quick question, just so you guys remember. Aaron said he's not sure if doing Gilbert is even an option, he's got to check it out, we'll get an answer.
It will take about an hour to figure that out, we will model it.
But it doesn't matter, right?
We gave a motion and?
We got a motion.
Direction to get this started, get the shovel in the ground.
No. Just go to the car and get it done, we'll be here still.
No, we'll wait for you.
And?
At this rate, yes.
Mr. Calano?
One more question, when, when, when's phase two going to come into, uh, into play?
Because you bring nine million dollars?
I, I think it would be dependent on what the ultimate financing plan turns out to be, and, and how, you know, do we want to compress the overall timeframe into less than five years or more than five years? Uh, it would, it would be part of that. Th- this graphic here presumed we would focus only on phase one
Mm-hmm.
for these first two years, but we would start design of phase two so that it could be built the following two years.
Okay.
If the city chose to push all this up a year to compress everything and to, that's a, that's a possibility, if the city chose to spread it out, that's a possibility as well. I do believe that the financing will play the biggest part.
So phase two will drop by a million three and be added to phase one, so?
Uh, with Gilbert, by seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred thousand, so we're saying?
So that's going to be?
Eight point two?
Eight two, instead of eight, nine, and it adds it to the top to ten three. All right, let's take it to a vote, we have a second, we have a primary, a secondary, go ahead and vote, roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman? For the sake of all our well-being, can we take, uh, from now until quarter to ten break?
Are you done with yours?
No, tomorrow.
Oh, it's late, quarter to eleven break.
So tomorrow, you don't have anything, do you?
I'm tabling stuff, so.
Well, no, you, you guys are lettering ten. That's all you got.
Oh, we don't need that, it's going to CIP next year, so.
Letter of intent?
You've still got E and F.
Oh, no, I said he only has one, yeah, I know I have E and F, I said that before.
Oh.
Yes, Jeff?
If I can interject, uh, one of the items left on Public Works is probably going to be tabled, and the other item's going to take five seconds.
Can?
Move forward.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question, is it, is it possible to table E?
So somebody makes a motion, yeah.
All right, well, I need a motion for someone to table E?
I'd like to table the motion, uh, to look at the proposed modification to the existing Tallox.
Second.
Future, future date, is that okay with you, Mr. Murmish and Mr. York? Need a roll call, just to see if everyone's on board.
Maybe, if you don't mind, when you're planning it, you guys tie that into the financing workshop we're looking to, so we don't have to drag Aaron back multiple times?
Do we need a roll call, or just? Roll call? Voice vote, table, all those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All I have is approval of contract with Robinson Engineering for the construction and management oversight, the Squaw Creek project, did not exceed a amount?
I'll make that motion.
Forty-eight thousand two hundred. All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Jackson, is all those favorable, yes, and went, uh, next thing you got?
Items to be considered?
No, items to be considered for future? Other than engineering standards for October, senior program, snow and grass, uh, anything else to be added to future?
Nope.
No? I make a motion for adjournment?
Call the Finance and Administration.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, adjourn.
And I'll call the Finance and Administration Committee to order. Note taker, please note that everyone is still in attendance.
And awake.
Second.
First, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the?
Second.
Any questions?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Where are we? Up next is a report of requindation, a letter of intent for the addresses seven hundred through seven hundred and seventy North Wooddale Road. Brad, I'll pass it on to you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take it, so just to be brief, uh, what you have before you today, or this evening, late in the evening, is a really good news item, um, it's really the culmination of a lot of hard work and, uh, dedication by both staff and direction by the city council to make sure we get a good development that everybody wants to see up at the old HSBC site. Um, we have turned away quite a few, um, developments up there that didn't really fit the criteria that the council wanted. Um, this development before you today fits really all the criteria that the council wanted, um, with an additional huge bonus of being a sales tax, uh, revenue generator, uh, and quite a substantial, uh, one at that, I may mention. Um, we're talking well into the hundreds of thousands of dollars, um, for the city, uh, on an annual basis. Um, in addition to that, it would be, um, kind of a corporate headquarters for a business, um, you know, over a hundred employees, um, just a, just exactly what the council had wanted for that location. Um, so tonight, what this is, is this just is a letter of intent to allow the company to relocate multiple locations um, from other suburbs into one Wooddale location, and they're working with a broker right now, and they just want to make sure the city is willing to enter into a sales tax sharing agreement with them, which we have done many times before with other businesses. And that would allow them to kind of finalize their deal, knowing that we would have this letter of intent. And then it would, would of course come back to council, um, to be ratified, uh, formally once we, um, once they sign the deal with the broker, and then we'll learn the business name, and, uh, we can ask some more questions at that point. But it is a non-controversial business, it is a relative, uh, no-brainer because it is all the things that the council had asked for in the past, and it is an extreme amount of money in revenue uh, going towards the city on an annual basis. I would note that the only deviation, uh, from our standard sales tax sharing agreements um, is that we have, uh, proposed a formula where we front-load this, um, expecting the business to be located
expecting the business to be located in town for many, many, many years, so it is, it is really a benefit for all.
All right. We have questions? Alderman Woods?
Make a motion to enter into the letter of intent with.
Second, then.
Alderman Jacob makes that second, questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have, I have one question, on the last page, it's the previous agreement to negotiate for two five-year extensions. So are we giving ten more years on this? Or is that total of ten years?
Director Wilson?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so the initial term is for the ten years. Yeah. As it was presented, the, the business had requested the ability to do two five-year extensions. And so, at the end of the ten years, so it'll be years eleven through fifteen and then sixteen through twenty, we said that that would, you know, be reasonable, however, it would have to be mutually agreed upon terms, negotiated at that time. So years eleven through fifteen and or sixteen through twenty would be renegotiated in, you know, year nine and year fourteen.
So?
Follow-up?
So we are not going to give approval for this right now for five to ten years?
Yes.
Right?
We're looking for a letter of, letter of intent today?
Not, we're five to ten more years added, so that's twenty.
So let me, let me, let me comment on that, right? So we're looking at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year additionally, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in sales tax revenue. We have a property that's been vacant for, I think, eight-plus years, generating zero dollars in property tax? That's additional money. I would say, Director Wilson, can you, I know we went over the numbers, you and I, when's our return on investment for this cost sharing or this rebate?
Real, real quick, the exciting thing, Alderman Messina, is it's not actually the three fifty, it's almost double that amount because the sales tax sharing agreement is only for the regular sales tax, not the non-home rule sales tax, we take all the non-home rule sales tax, which is not even listed in here.
Because this is in the Tiff district.
Like I said, it's an extreme amount of money and it's, it's a no-brainer.
Got you, okay. Mayor?
Just, everybody wants to be transparent, just so everybody knows, the ten years, hold on. The ten years, at a maximum, this business is gonna get two million.
Yep.
At a maximum. If they get, they get it in five years, that means the city is getting even more money. We're, we're getting three fifty at a minimum on our share, plus the non-home rule sales tax, so.
Yeah, I mean, you, Mayor makes a great point, it's a sliding scale that goes from seventy-five percent to thirty percent in year nine. I'm not a mathematician, you're the finance guy, but thirty percent of three fifty? That's, we're getting the majority by the end of that, by the end of that cost sharing.
And besides that, we're getting a brand-new building.
Yeah, two brand-new buildings.
Hundred new employees in town. Vacant property that the taxes are probably cut in half, that's, so that, it's a winner all the way around. This is gonna help pay for some of this stuff we discussed tonight, just so you know.
Thank you.
And I would, yeah, everyone seems to have these comments, but don't forget, just like we thought about with memory care, the water, the jobs, people coming to work every day and eating in town, the Wooddale corridor and developing that, hundred people that have to eat every day. I mean, this to me is a no-brainer, I'm sure if you spend some time with Alderman, Alderman, I see your future, Director Wilson, I think you'll see that payout, it's just, it's, it's a no-brainer. Go ahead, Alderman Sizmarzki?
Well, you said it's either gonna accelerate our payment plans on other things to help pay for next items coming up?
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, roll call please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Catalano? Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Messina? Alderman Woods?
Yes, and I'd like to thank the staff for all their hard work on this one.
Thank you, staff.
I don't thank you too often.
Yeah, so staff, thank you for that and for, it's a pretty big anchor, can I just one quick comment? I know, now that it's passed, but can you, what's that, oh, sorry, and Rob? Of course, sorry, we said staff, and community development, of course, Director Cage? You and your team as well, thank you, I know you guys are putting a lot of time. Can you just come real quick, if we, on that three fifty number we talked about, I know that jumps them up as far as sales tax generator, what are they in the city then, number two, number three? Okay, sorry, we're losing her, okay, sorry. All right, so next up is items to be considered at future meetings, are there any? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second, motion adjourned, or meeting adjourned? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, meeting ended, I'm going to sleep.